Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting, January the 28th, 2014. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Mary O’Connell?
Here.
Councilwoman Barabara?
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Here.
Mayor Ruan?
Here. I’d like to thank the Garden Club for the flowers they always provide for our meetings. And I’d ask the city manager, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a few announcements this evening. The first one is regarding our water shortage, rain or lack thereof. This past fall and winter has been one of the driest years on record across the state of California. At the state level, Governor Brown has declared a drought emergency and asked California residents and businesses to reduce their water consumption by at least 20 percent. At the local level, San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, SFPUC, has issued a statement today requesting a voluntary 10 percent reduction on the San Francisco regional water system in response to the dry weather conditions and to ensure that available water supplies are prudently managed. In coordination with this local advisory, the city of San Bruno is asking residents and businesses to conserve water to help meet the 10 percent voluntary reduction goal that will help preserve hetch-hetches and our own groundwater’s valuable resources. The SFPUC is closely monitoring water levels in the Hetch-Echi reservoir and snowpack data. Within the next 90 days, the SFPUC will have survey data from snowpack depths and reservoir resource levels throughout the SF regional water supply to share with other water agencies. The data results will allow water agencies to develop their specific water supply strategies for the future. Residents of San Bruno are requested to follow water conservation practices at all times, and the city will update residents on any changes made to the request of a 10 percent voluntary reduction when new information is available. Water conservation tips and additional information is available on the city’s website at www.sanbruno.ca.gov and on Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency’s BOSSWA website at http/BAWSCA.org. You’ll be hearing a lot more about that in the very near future, I’m sure. And now, we do have a small presentation from Chief Telford, if you would, regarding some recent burglaries in and around San Bruno.
Thank you, Mayor Ruan and members of the city council. In the past month, there’s been 13 residential burglaries, nine of which that we believe are related. These crimes aren’t specific to one neighborhood, and primarily, they’ve occurred on the west side of El Camino. The crime of breaking into somebody’s home violates their sense of security. We take these crimes very personal. I’ve made apprehending these individuals our top priority, and I can assure you that everyone in the San Bruno Police Department is looking to get these people. These aren’t unique to San Bruno. Similar crimes have occurred in San Mateo County, all over the peninsula, all over the Bay Area. Our investigators are working with other investigators from San Mateo County and San Francisco. Like I said, we’re working diligently to apprehend these individuals, but we can only do it with the public’s help. We don’t want to create a panic, and we don’t want residents to take matters into their own hands because that could be very unsafe. But we do want residents to be diligent. No matter how small it seems, call us if you see something suspicious. Call us on 911. To give an example of how we need the public’s help, yesterday, a resident in other jurisdiction reported seeing something unusual. They reported a description of a vehicle, and within minutes, our officers on burglary patrol for our other series of crimes were able to chase these guys down in San Francisco. We lost them for a brief period of time, but our investigators were in touch with San Francisco and Daly City Police, who then picked the car up, and we apprehended the suspect and were actively searching for two additional suspects. This wouldn’t have happened if that citizen didn’t report it to us. In several cases, the suspects knock on the door to see if somebody’s home. If no one answers the door, they’ll go to the rear yard and try and find a way to break into the house. If somebody does answer the door, they’ll make up an excuse while they’re there and they’ll leave. We’re asking residents to call us on 911 if they see this or any other suspicious activity. Please record the person’s description. Please write down any kind of vehicle description you may have, because that could give us the missing piece that we need to make this case. Again, we’re asking residents to call 911 if they witness any kind of suspicious activity or see anything out of the ordinary. Again, it doesn’t matter how small it is. We can only do it with the help from the public, and together, we’ll be able to apprehend and make San Bruno safer. Again, we don’t want people to panic, but we do want them to be diligent in reporting suspicious activity. Thank you. And I’ll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the chief? Could you step to the podium and ask your question, please?
I’m Anna Leach from San Bruno, and I live on Fifth Avenue.
Talk right into the mic.
I’m sorry.
It’s all right.
Excuse me. I’m Anna Leach from San Bruno, and I live in the Bel Air section. And I was just wondering, these burglaries, do these happen during the day, or the afternoon, or at night, or sporadic?
Okay. We’ll let the chief answer that.
Oh, I’m sorry. Excuse me.
Sure. Oh, no, that’s a very good question, and no need to be embarrassed. They happen primarily in the daytime. We did have one burglary occur in the evening hours when the resident wasn’t home. But again, the remainder of those burglaries and the majority of residential burglaries that we see happen during the daytime when no one’s home. They primarily happen during the weekday, but that’s not to say that it can’t happen on the weekend, nor do we have a set pattern. And in one of these instances, in the burglaries that I referenced earlier, we had four of them occur in one day. And we were -- an alarm sounded in one of those cases, and we were there within minutes and determined that the burglars had come and gone.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for the chief? Well, thank you for the one apprehension. You know, you’re working on the rest of it. We’ve had a lot of concerned citizens contact us, and we’re trying to stay on top of it. So, there’s some misinformation out there, which has a tendency to panic people, but there are all the way 30 to 45 burglaries. It’s a much smaller amount, although one is too much. So, thank you and the department for your fine efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a couple of presentations this evening. The first one is to present a proclamation proclaiming February 5th, 2014, as Relay for Life San Bruno Kickoff Day. And I’d like to read this. Relay for Life San Bruno Kickoff Party, whereas cancer is predicted to strike one out of every three Americans sometime in our lifetime with an estimated 3,545 new cases of cancer diagnosed in San Mateo County in 2013; and whereas the American Cancer Society is the nation’s largest and most respected voluntary health organization since 1913, and has funded research which has contributed to every known method for detecting cancer and techniques for treating cancer, thereby increasing the cancer’s survival rates from 10 percent to over 65 percent; and whereas the American Cancer Society is the voluntary community-based coalition of local citizens dedicated to eliminating cancer as a major health problem through financial support and education awareness; and whereas Relay for Life San Bruno financially benefits the American Cancer Society’s research and patient support programs and educationally benefits our local citizens; and whereas the San Bruno Relay for Life Committee is holding their kickoff event Wednesday, February 5th, starting at 6:00 PM at the city’s recreation center; and at approximately 7:00 PM, the committee is scheduled to host a very uplifting presentation by cancer survivor Laura Baldini. Now therefore, I, Jim Ruan, Mayor of the City of San Bruno, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, February 5th, 2014, as Relay for Life San Bruno Kickoff Day. I further urge all San Bruno residents to recognize and participate in this anti-cancer campaign event and help finish the fight. And I’ll present this to Kana Ibera, council member.
Actually, we’ll have -- thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have Allison Baca of American Cancer Society. Mr. Mayor and members of my city council, thank you very much. As you know, this is my pet project, and as much as the statistics that were just read, this is, for me, has to be a community event. There are 5,200 other communities throughout the United States that celebrate Relay for Life. And we all know that we know someone that has cancer, who has suffered from cancer, and unfortunately, has died from cancer. This is the one thing that brings an entire community together, and I’m so proud to be a part of it. San Bruno is -- this is only our fifth year. Relay for Life has been around for 27 years, and for the last 27 years, has raised nearly $5 billion for cancer research and cancer programs. The first three years, Relay for Life San Bruno raised under $50,000, and I’m proud to say that last year, we surpassed $60,000. So, we’re setting our sights high this year, and we have a great team, partially this committee along with Allison. We have a committee of 15. We need more help, so if you’re listening here, if you know someone that would like to be involved, please get in touch with us. We listed next Wednesday at the rec center, free food, free entertainment. That should bring a bunch of people out. But find out about Relay. Come out, find out what it’s all about, and possibly even sign up. But come out and help your community, and you will save lives. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and best of luck. Item 4B, we will receive a presentation by the San Mateo County Mosquito Infecture Control District, and it’ll be presented by, I hope I do this right, Ben Rusmizel?
Rusmizel.
Rusmizel, pretty close, okay.
I’m just going to introduce Ben. I’m Robert Rico. I’m your trustee to the mosquito district, and I recently had the yearly opportunity to sit down with technician Ben Rusmizel, who services the city of San Bruno and discussed questions previously that I had to send him and basically receive a status update and to understand better the conditions in San Bruno and what’s happened during the last year. So, I’m going to go start the PowerPoint presentation, and I think by the time Ben gets through the slides, you will see that with his help and the whole district, that San Bruno is being more than adequately taken care of relative to mosquitoes and other.
Okay. So, just before I get started, something apropos to what the chief was saying. When we come to do inspections, either for service requests or something that’s in our source database, I mean, we’ll be in uniform, we’ll have our work truck, we’ll have our badge ID, but our typical modus is to knock on a door, announce our presence, make contact with the homeowner, and if they’re not home and it’s a source that’s established that we’ve been to before, we typically do enter the backyard to check whatever the standing water source is. So, that’s what we have. But anybody that works for my district, that’s one of my coworkers, is going to have a uniform, badge, truck, and know what they’re talking about. So, just wanted to touch on that real quick. Okay. Because we do get a lot of people that are concerned. So, mosquitoes in San Bruno for 2013, and it’s a nice picture that I took up there of the city. Okay, we offer services for mosquitoes, rodents, yellow jackets. We do tick testing, IDs of random other non-mosquito-related insects as well. So, yeah, one of the questions was, what are habitual problem areas? And although this has been exceptionally dry year for mosquitoes, we also, including my answer, there was some utility vaults, there would be like a manhole cover on a sidewalk where if you lifted it up with a hook, it would be completely full of water underneath. It doesn’t drain out. But also, another problem that’s been happening in South City and San Bruno lately, too, is issues underneath homes where plumbing has gone bad, broken sewer lines, broken underneath a sink or something, unknown to the resident at the time, and it’s collected water and created huge problems, and it’s hard to find. So, here’s just a picture. There’s going to be several comparing Mills Field from last year to this year, just to show impact on how much the lack of rain is going. So, that’s from last year. That’s the same general location of Mills Field this year. Those tulie areas are usually completely full of water. If I was to walk in there, it’d be over my head. It’s a very difficult area to treat and inspect. That’s the bar overpass going into SFO, usually full of water this year, and even today, currently dry. So, one of the questions was about Parks Department. How could they assist us? Well, they could assist with inspection and treatment and code enforcement. Grassy area in the city park was soggy, and yeah, this year, it’s been a lot better. So, that’s just an example. The water flow, it flows up above from the county park all the way down, so I think it’s pretty much the source of it might be groundwater. How has the district worked for the San Francisco International Airport? They did call for a few problems in the Mills Field area. They’re having mosquito problems that we identified and worked on. We haven’t had any issues working with Caltrain at all, anywhere around where they’re building the new train station and overpass. Everything’s worked great there. Working with the San Bruno Park School District, they call us quite a bit in the summertime and fall for yellow jacket nests. We go to John Muir School quite a bit. Their maintenance staff typically identifies the problems, they give us a call, it’s marked, we take care of it, we treat it, do whatever it takes to make sure that the kids don’t get stung, especially during lunchtime when the yellow jackets are trying to steal some of their soda, or actually, there’s no sodas anymore, but you know, something that they’re eating.
And as the slide shows, Dr. Hunt has been very supportive over the last year when he has to be involved.
Oh, just a picture, it’s cool. So, yeah, the manhole covers or vaults on El Camino, the ones that are a problem, we take note of. If it’s going to be habitual issue, it ends up in my source database, on my computer that’s in my truck, and it’s put into route form, and we’ll treat it. All the other things, the street gutters and all that, get done seasonally by one of our eight part-time technicians.
Just showing, and then we have a question.
Right. So, in the lower San Bruno area, around San Bruno Avenue and...
And the avenues, 217.
The avenues, yes. There was the metal screening that’s been put in the catch basin itself and also leading into it, and that’s to trap debris. So, cups, yard clippings, anything like that that could flow out to the bay, it traps it. But it also has a tendency to back up in the case of a storm surge, which we haven’t experienced that much this year. But the city has worked good at cleaning out those areas so the water doesn’t get backed up too much, create a flow problem. And the rebuild Crestmore area has been going well, and not too many problems to speak of in that area. The city, more specifically residents, could really help by checking periodically underneath their homes, make sure everything is dry underneath there. If there’s any major puddles or anything that could propose a problem, they should call us and let us know. And just do periodic inspection around the property, dump out containers, tip over wheelbarrows, stuff like that. If it collects water, it’s just no good. And district, how has the public outreach made my job easier? It allows me to inform residents on things that could create mosquito sources. We got a lot of experience working with the 80s egypti yellow fever mosquito down in Menlo Park with making door hangers and flyers to announce to residents that we’re going to be coming by and stuff. And I’m taking that same idea and applying it to my zone for areas where it’s hard to get access a lot of times to do searches. The lab constantly is working with the field staff. They do identifications of our insects, they do tick flagging and tick dissections where they’re testing the ticks using PCR machine for Lyme disease. And in those areas that where that’s encountered, there’s public notices being put up. Current situation is Water Dog Lake over in the Belmont area.
And as the slide shows, with the smartphones that detect now how they can almost instantly send them out, that sort of information so they can...
Right. So, when we do carbon dioxide testing for surveillance, when the results come in from the lab, they could be sent to us via email, our results in the field, and we get very quick turnaround with those. And they, he wanted to know if the district was providing us with adequate training, and they answered that question, it’s definitely yes. We do tailgate training for safety and familiarization with equipment, some of which I host, because I also serve as the fleet mechanic at work. And we also go to continuing education seminars, we do webinars. Where as materials change and surveillance methods change, treatment, all that, we’re being kept up to date. I’ll be traveling to San Diego next month, where we’re going to be going to a regional seminar for a few days. What could the district provide me to serve better? And my answer was sort of, the 80s egypti problem, which is ongoing, in fact, we were doing inspections this morning down in Menlo Park, it’s going to be a huge tax on our workforce. So, we have to go door-to-door. It’s very, very involved, and we need community cooperation there. But it really taxed our crew, and we did get another full-time person, and the technician who services that area is going to get a few more assistance, too, to help out. And yeah, I did want to thank Mr. Rico for being very involved board member, giving me a chance to speak. These are questions, the answers that were written to him as one-on-one, but he chose to include it. But he is a very involved board member, and I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you guys. So, we do more surveillance, we get faster testing, we get better mosquito treatment, everybody’s happy. And if you have any questions, I could try my best to answer them for you now. If not, you could send a call to the district or send us an email.
Any questions for Ben?
If there’s any questions, I’m more than happy to try to answer them.
Ken, any questions?
No?
No?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for all the work you do, both of you.
Our trustee is very good, so I don’t have any questions.
All right. Item five, review of the agenda. Everybody okay with the agenda this evening? All right. Item six, approval of the minutes of the special city council, closed session minutes of January 13th and 14th, 2014, and city council minutes of January 14th, 2014. Any errors, corrections, omissions? Seeing none, though, stand approved as submitted. Item seven is the consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented earlier. Council action may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff. Any action or questions on the consent?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the consent calendar. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number eight, public hearings. There are no public hearings this evening. Item number nine, public comment on items not on the agenda. It is the council’s policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council on public comment? All right. Seeing none, we’ll move right to item 10, which is conduct of business. We have a number here tonight, but I’m sure we can get through them very, very quickly. Item 10A, receive an oral report and confirm the city council direction regarding the construction of the decorative arch at the San Bruno grade separation.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, last week, you held a special study session meeting in order to have the opportunity to discuss among yourselves various issues related to the need to provide a definitive decision to the joint powers board related to the community’s interest in proceeding with the arch decorative feature at the grade separation site. In follow-up to that meeting, that city council members expressed a variety of interests and requests for additional information specifically about how the, how an arch made out of a solid material as opposed to one that was internally illuminated and clad with the Plexiglas, colored Plexiglas material, how that solid arch would actually look when it was completely fabricated and installed. In follow-on to that discussion, your subcommittee consisting of Mayor Ruan and Councilmember Ibera met as recently as yesterday with JPB staff, as well as with the designer from the contract design firm engaged by the JPB, as well as a fabricator’s representative out of Washington State, to discuss very specific details about the fabrication and the ultimate appearance up close of this arch decorative feature. We have just received and just provided to you, I see that you have materials in front of you. The Public Services Director has those materials also available to display on the screen behind me, which may actually give you a better way of seeing the very specific aspects of this arch feature. In particular, the council’s interest centered on how was this thing going to actually be fabricated, and how were the joins, since this is not one big continuous single piece of steel, how would the joins, first of all, how many would they be, where would they be, and how would they be connected to one another in a manner that wouldn’t give a sort of pieced-together appearance? And then, how would the finish coat of paint look, particularly if somebody were to walk up close to this arch? Would it provide the substantial positive aesthetic appearance that the city has anticipated and expected? So, we’re diving now into a number of very specific details about construction and appearance of this arch in order to finally be able to give the joint powers board a final decision, which they have requested and urged us that they need to have by the end of this month. So, we are very, very close to that time period and want to be able tonight to simply provide you with what we know and then to answer your questions. I think I’m going to not continue with a staff presentation, but allow the subcommittee members perhaps to identify your interests, your observations, and we’re happy to illustrate the materials that we’ve received since your meeting yesterday. Mr. Rafael Boland from the JPB is in the audience and is available to answer your
We did meet a number of times up until yesterday, and yesterday was our last meeting. We had a conference call with the fabricator and the designer. HNTV was actually present at the subcommittee. So, we asked a number of questions. I was frankly, I would just say it straight up, kind of surprised that after all of these months, and we talked about an arch, a lot of this discussion wasn’t really, hadn’t really been planned before as far as the coating, as far as how it’s put together, what we’d like to see. But having said that, we’re going to move forward in the next few minutes, hopefully to get this thing resolved. We asked about seam designs, whether they should be bolted together with a bolt-type pattern that would actually be visible from the street, or whether there would be some type of a seam that would show us just a small, very, very thin groove in the surface. As far as I’m concerned, the seam design is the way to go. I don’t think we want to get into a lot of bolts and a lot of exposed metal. I noticed here that the panel options, I can talk to maybe Clara about this, but I’m a little confused about panel options. I don’t think we spoke in detail about that. That’s number one. And then also, there’s a seam frequency, which I guess we can’t do a whole lot about. It is, in fact, what it is, but the longer the seams, the more preferable for me. But I definitely want an arch. I don’t want something that’s segmented, if you know what I’m saying. So, having said that, Ken?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, it’s come a long way, and the reality is that this is not one piece of steel. It’s not a smooth piece of steel. It is actually a bunch of pieces. It’s one, it’s a substructure of structural steel that is being wrapped in sheet metal, heavy-gauge sheet metal. And so, once we grab that idea, that’s when all of the questions came up as to how, one, how we’re going to put it together, how, what is it going to look like? And I think ultimately, it boils down to what is it going to look like? Is it going to look anything like any of these drawings that we’ve been presented with over... Is it going to look anything like any of these drawings that we've been presented with over the last few months, few years? I think we've gotten closer. I, I do agree that the, that the seams, the bent and clipped seam design is, is the best. I just hope and pray that the sections that we do get put together, fit together as nicely as the seam looks and as nicely as the, the renderings and the drawings show. I, if that's how it turns out, then I'd like to have as few seams as possible and as, as representative of a smooth arch as, as we can achieve.
The other thing we talked about was the, the lighting of the arch or, or the fact that maybe it didn't have to be lit. The electrical conduit facilities will in fact be in the base, whether we use them or not at this point in time. But the feeling was that it would have a lot of light just on its own because it would be illuminated from the, the actual platform, which has substantial lighting. And also the tunnel over which it, it goes is, is going to be illuminated also. So we weren't, we didn't have a big concern about trying to illuminate it at, at night. And we didn't definitely want to impose on drivers' eyes driving up San Bruno Avenue. So I, my, my personal feeling is that we do not illuminate it for evening. And that if we wanted to in the future for, for one reason or another, the electrical is there. It's not that big of a deal to just, you know, install some fixtures. So that would be, from the bottom up, we wouldn't put anything on the arch at all.
Just a couple of observations. The materials that you have in front of you identify that a smooth semi-circular arch in order to fabricate will require, I believe it's seventeen pieces that will be joined together. And the consensus, I think, at the conversation yesterday was that they would be joined together in a manner that uses the clip technology as opposed to being bolted in order that it would receive then as smooth as possible an appearance. You have a picture in your packet, this one, that shows the way that the steel is bent and then clipped on its backside. And then it has at the join location essentially a small groove or a divot that would be unavoidable, but would not be particularly obtrusive to the continuous appearance of the, of the arch as viewed from the street. Whereas a different technology being, using bolts would be a more visible and perhaps noisy visual appearance to the, to the person who is standing near the arch. So based on, on our understanding, there would be, as I said, seventeen pieces that would be joined with the clip technology. Material would be painted and would be finished so that those joints would be as invisible as possible, although they're, as the pictures depict, you might be able to see a line where the, where the seam actually occurs.
Well, I guess, I guess what's left is to, to look at these panel options because this is what's, which is very new. Obviously, we want the least amount of seams. We'd like to go with the four-panel layout, option two. I'm still concerned at how this option two is being depicted in four pieces and actually having a, a edge, you know, on four, four edges. What we experienced yesterday was a panel that was bent, so it would be a more of a smoother, smoother transition. Now it looks as if we're going to have, you know, an, an edge detail.
Is that just because the panel options given to us here, you weren't able to do a rounded corner? Or is that, is this actually what is proposed?
Yeah, I think we're going to need to ask Rafael Boland to respond to those questions.
I'm sorry, you're looking at the panel options here?
Yeah, right at, at the mic, yeah. The one that says, the one that says panel options.
Yeah, okay.
And it's on the screen.
Okay, so the first thing I should mention on this is it's exaggerated, obviously the size is exaggerated for effect. So the one you're seeing on the left side is attempting to show three pieces, three sides of it bent, similar to what you saw yesterday. So it would be, it would be approximately that radius.
The radius we saw, yes, it's actual radius, it's not an angle.
Correct. It isn't quite a ninety, a perfect ninety. There is a slight radius.
No, but I mean, what you're showing here is actually an angle.
Like three bends.
Yeah, so three sides would be bent and then the fourth face, which would be the side that's opposite from the viewer from San Bruno, so the backside of the arch would be proposed to be clipped.
Let me ask it another way. Item, letter P on option one is a bullnose.
Yes.
Okay, it doesn't show that, but I just want to make sure that, that's understood.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry. Yes, I understand your question now, sorry. You mean it's a radius in lieu of an actual chamfer? That is correct, yes. It isn't shown properly on the drawing, correct. It would be rounded, if that's your question, yes.
And why can't, why can't the four panel depict that?
Why couldn't all four sides look like?
Well, I mean, so what I'm not clear on is, you know, F means that there is field connections. So how, how are those four panels going to be connected now?
You're talking about the one on the right now?
On the right.
Yeah, so in that scenario, you would clip or connect all four. You bring four separate rectangles up in the air and then assemble a box. In, in the one to the left, it's, you're bringing up a C-shaped, almost a box, and then you're sealing the box behind.
Okay, so this is, this is now another curve ball because we, originally we were concerned about how each section was going to butt up against each other as we went along the arch.
Correct.
Now, now you've presented something as to different, as to what it's going to look like.
Correct.
On the edge. We know we're going to have these seams.
Correct.
Now we're going to have something.
Correct.
More prominent, yeah.
Yeah, so that, that's what we were trying to show there because in plan, when you're actually looking at it in dark green, it's difficult to see on the first image that there really is a seam running along the top and the bottom. But if you can make out the black on the green, then you've got better eyes than I do. So what we try to do is zoom in on it to show that, yes, exactly right. What we were talking about yesterday was primarily that there would be seams as each piece matted up against the next piece. And that's still true, but in addition, there'd have to be something. You can't get a perfect ninety without welding and grinding flush. So either you bend it like the piece you saw yesterday, or you're going to have a slight recess where the clip joins the next clip.
Okay, can we go back to that panel again? So why, why can't we have the, the C on, on the, on the four panel out if we were to flip that ninety degrees? So that you can have that exposed edge facing up, up and down instead of sideways?
So, so you can. In, in the one you're seeing there is an option two, remember that the intent was to use mechanical fasteners, either bolts or rivets or something? If you were going to weld it, which is one of the things we talked about yesterday, then you, you absolutely would. You'd flush mount it. So you wouldn't see that little recess like you see there. The only reason why it's, it's slightly inset is so that you could screw it or bolt it or do something to it. But if you're willing to put it welded, then yes, you're correct. It would look like a ninety.
So option two is not, is not a clip, is not a clip installation?
So the, yeah, so you have basically, one side was overlapped and bolted. This could be, this could be any one of those versions. It could be clipped and still have all four sides. It could be welded and have all four sides. This particular one happens to be showing a, a bolted connection.
So for everyone watching, if, if we want the cleanest design with the clips and the seams, we go with the C-shaped panel layout, option one, which also has more, more sections. So it, so we don't have, we really don't have a choice of choosing between one to two or two to, one to two seam frequency or two to two seam frequency. We have to go with one to two seam frequency, which is a lot more sections. Yeah. And we just have to hope that it's clean and.
Our, our designer also feels there's advantages to that simply because it's a lot easier to build those segments with parallel straight lines than it would be to try to create each single piece with a curve. So the smaller the segment gets, I know it means more seams, but the smaller the segment gets, the more a series of straight lines looks like an arch. If you were going to go with like these eight-foot spacings, which you could, you've just added an additional level of complexity. So, so it would never look like that bottom one where it looks like a truncated twenty-four-piece thing. What we would instead do is try to curve each separate segment. But given that these are already custom-made clipped-on panels, you've just made it significantly more complicated, right? Because now everything's got to have the correct radii and still mat up on the bottom. So we think we could do it, but the complexity goes way up. Because now you're curving plate and you're doing all kinds of stuff that you're not doing in the other shorter panel configuration.
It's not an easy thing to build.
No, not at all. So you're saying either way, it's going to be segmented? It's not actually going to be curved?
So it, it will be curved. What I'm saying is that it will be, each four-foot section would be a series of straight lines that taken together give the effect of a curve. If you actually try to cut a curve into each piece, then you would have to physically bend every single flat, like your, that's a nice little eclipse we were showing, would have to somehow also be curved to make that work. So the thought was if the panel sizes got a little bit smaller, the smaller the panel size, the more it looks like a curve.
It's so ironic because the structural steel is, is bent. It's, it's totally curved.
Correct.
And now, now we're, now we're facing it, we're cladding the structural steel and we can't curve it.
We, we can curve it. It is, it is a doable thing. I'm just going off what my designer recommended. And that's if you're using a clip-type application. There are, as we talked about, there's other ways to do it. I mean, you, we always have the option of welding it and grinding it flush, in which case you can make steel do whatever you want it to do. Because as, as you correctly point out, I mean, that steel was a straight hollow structural section that we took and bent. So I mean, it's, you can do it.
Well, it would be, I mean, it would be a piece of cake if it was all the same. It's two feet at the top and four feet at the edge, so every piece is, every piece is different. I understand that.
Yeah, exactly. That's, that's the problem. And, and it, again, doesn't mean it's, it's not doable. It's just that the, the concern that one piece doesn't matter perfectly, as I mentioned yesterday, just becomes an issue of, if you had a whole bunch of pieces that were all identical, you could substitute one if you got a, you know, bad apple. But if you, if each one of these has to fit like a jigsaw puzzle, it's just, there's more risk on the schedule, more risk on the, on the fabrication tolerance.
So am I the last? So is there a cost factor here?
There is. So unfortunately, I don't know if you have in your packet the last sheet that says options matrix. You weren't possibly.
No.
Not, I can just go through it, yeah. So what I attempted to do is look at what I considered to be broadly speaking, and there's a bunch of choices in your packet, obviously, but broadly speaking, the three main ways that this thing could be assembled. So starting with the assumption that it's, it's going to be an arch, that it's going to be made out of, out of a solid sheet metal type of construction, your options would be to use some kind of physical, so either a rivet or a bolt. Option two would be those clips that we talked about. And option three would be to weld it and grind it flush. I wasn't able by council time to get a firm price on what those panels cost. It would have to be a custom application because the people who sell these typically sell them for buildings and they sell them as rectangles. So what we'd be looking for is sort of a 3D parallelogram, so it would be a little bit more complicated. I don't, I'm not exactly sure the prices off that. I do know that the time would go up because of the procurement. The sheet metal with a bolted shop welds, that is sort of the baseline, what, what you saw previously. The only reason the price went down nominally from what you saw before is that I took out the eighty-six thousand for the elevator glass that is no longer being considered. And then finally, the sheet metal using all welded seams, that would definitely increase the cost because now you're welding, you're actually doing some relatively cumbersome welds, some of which have to be done upside down in the air. In addition, the biggest single driver of cost increase in that is that placing panels and screwing them on shoring is one thing, but now actually having to perform welding on a platform is going to require a more robust platform and shoring and things like that. That plus a small increase in the design costs is where I got that hundred and fifty thousand increase from the base version you saw. That also, as I, as I mentioned, has a schedule impact. It's approximately an additional month to erect that type of arch in the field. It's, it's almost three continuous weeks of welding with two crews to get that in. And then there's some grinding and painting, so for a total of four additional weeks on the schedule.
So I don't want to hash over it, but I want to, do want to go over it. What did you figure originally?
What did I think, the original solid arch?
We agreed to pay for half of what we were going to get was going to be an arch and it was going to cost X number of dollars.
Correct. So one point two million?
So what did you figure originally?
What was my original estimate for an arch?
And what were you going to do for that amount of money?
Okay, so the original estimate was one point two million and that was the construction as well as design, management, et cetera, et cetera. What that included is an arch. At that point, we were talking about an internally lit arch that would have Plexiglas on two faces with LED lights. The one, the one you'd look at right coming up San Bruno, the other one right off the platform. And then sheet metal top and bottom. In addition, included in that one point two million was, I don't recall the exact figure, but there were some monies for one elevator glass to be upgraded, if you will, from a clear glass to a glass that matched the same color scheme for the elevator. So that was my estimate of one point two million. That was basically the scope of which I estimated that off of.
Then I thought a few months ago, well, a few weeks ago, when the big push was on and we have to know right now what it is. If in fact it's going to be metal, it's going to be cheaper.
Correct. So there's one interim step in there, if I may, which is that although it's absolutely true that November two thousand and twelve, I did an estimate of one point two million, a lot of things did change in the scope, including, you know, the, the foundations got a lot bigger, the steel structural element significantly more robust than what I anticipated back in two thousand and twelve. There's a number of reasons why this, these things happened. And so my estimate on that had actually gone up from one point two to one point four million for the same basic scope. And so, yes, I did another estimate for removing some of the features and looking at a solid metal scope. And that was, again, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it was one point one six million dollars construction, again, including an amount for a green elevator glazing as well. So all I did is I took that same one point one six five and I removed eighty-six thousand dollars, which is the line item for the green glass, and that's where I got that first one point one million. However, the only way we were ever able to get schedule extension out as far as we have been on a, on a solid metal arch was to basically take a very similar approach to what we've been talking about previously, but in lieu of putting in this lighting system and in lieu of. system and in lieu of putting in plexiglass was to just go in with effectively a box made out of, um, sheet metal. Subsequent to that, I understood there were lots of concerns regarding specifically how the seams would come together, um, and that brought into play other manufacturing methods that could minimize that. So those were the, the things we talked about yesterday. So the, either welding it or, uh, some kind of clip on application. That was not my assumption when I, when I came to the staff and said that it was one point one six five. My, uh, assumption at that point was very similar to what you saw earlier in this presentation as a, as a bolted on finish. It would effectively be the same skeleton and the same, um, mesh, if you will, as was proposed previously. And then in lieu of the clear glazing and lighting, it was just gonna be, uh, sheet metal. So, I mean, all, obviously, as, as scopes change, I mean, um, I, I have to fine tune my, my estimate as well. And schedule.
For the clips, clip system, you don't have a figure, but it's safe to say that it'll be somewhere in between the one point one and one point three five?
I think that's safe to say. I'm, a, a, a big component of that is gonna be how quickly we need it delivered because this will be a custom application. So I've reached out to a couple of, uh, manufacturers of this, um, but, uh, I, no, I wasn't able to get a, a response on dollars, um, by this evening.
I mean, what, what do, what do we face with as far as a decision tonight? And I guess Raphael, you can tell us also. What do you need? I mean, we just got this an hour and a half ago.
Right. I understand.
Yeah.
So I think, um...
Raphael, excuse me, through the chair.
Yeah.
Could you just, uh, Councilman asked a great question, but let's, let's cut to the chase. Let's not measure the words.
Okay.
Let's just say what it is. Let's, we've been dealing with this for a long time and the longer it goes and the more I hear and all of this, you know, I'm glad I wasn't on the subcommittee, to be blunt. But, um, um, could we just, but, but I mean, be very clear.
Okay.
Very concise so that we all are on the same page.
I, I'm doing my best.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Very simply, we're at the point that, uh, if we don't get a decision to proceed with, um, a bolted sheet metal type connection for an arch, uh, then the arch, from a schedule point of view, cannot be constructed under the San Bruno Grade SEP contract. Does that mean we need to stop looking at arch options? I would suggest no. I think we just have to look at a different contractual mechanism to accomplish that.
Which means more cost.
Yes. That is correct. More time and more money, yes.
Irene?
There's a lot of negative things we could say about how all this went one way and another way and incomplete information and then we changed things and all that stuff. But the bottom line is, there's an arch. It's attractive looking. It's interesting, I, in my opinion. And the options you have here, I, I think if, if it's painted this color, I don't think there's a, a big difference between the bolted and the clipped. Now, the Golden Gate Bridge is bolted. Nobody pays any attention to it. Nobody looks at the bolts and says, ooh, they're ugly or anything. It's just how it is. So in my opinion, I think your option one would do fine. I think it's, it would, um, it would be an added attraction to the, to the whole structure and I think it would be what people were way back originally looking for. So that's my opinion.
The, the frustration with me is, uh, first of all, I think the bolts are industrial looking, but we can get over it because we're gonna grow and it's gonna grow on it, you know, how this all transpired. Very upsetting that we talked about this many, many, many months ago and when we paid, I think the quote was twenty-five thousand dollars for a so-called mock-up, which was slapped together in literally a half hour. And it looked like we'd be driving up San Bruno Avenue saying, welcome to the biggest little city in the world, because it looked like junk. I was really disappointed after that. So, um, and, and I'm disappointed with this too, because I thought the JPP, after all of this discussion and all of this rush, rush, we have to know right now that you'd have some specific ideas and details as to how this really could work. It wasn't explored, it sounded like, till yesterday afternoon. I mean, you had a big steel structure underneath and that's fine. That can all be fabricated. But now we have to have a bigger foundation and now the only way to bring it in under cost is to bolt it together. And, uh, it'll look fine. That part really, and the bottom line doesn't worry me, but it's how we got there that's very upsetting and I'm very, very disappointed. And please pass it on to Mark Simon and Mike Scanlon about how this all transpired because, uh, you know, this, to, to be the, the end of this project and a highlight for us, uh, it's gonna look great, but it still leaves a very bad taste in my mouth, how, how it happened and how it came to this point. So as far as I'm concerned, if that's, if that's what we need to do to get this done, I'm not gonna spend any more money, that's for sure, especially on, uh, on, on something we don't even know what it's gonna cost. If, if you can do this bolted, uh, and, and actually powder coated, if you will, uh, arch to make this look, look right, um, then I'll go along with it.
Well said, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm not gonna belabor it. What we found out is that we don't have an option. We agreed on a, on a price and the price was whatever we were gonna get. And we just sort of slowed, slowed the process down so that we could better learn what we were gonna get. And I think it's been said in many subcommittee meetings and even here, what we expect and what we hope we're going to get and what we're visually gonna see. If it's got bolts, fine, but, uh, I'm, I really don't think, I mean, you're in the business for building railroads, great separations. And it's, I think it's simp, simple to say that, safe to say, that none of us or anyone was, is in the business to build an arch like this. I think we, we got sold a bill of goods by Peo, uh, Feo Paoli. They stuck with that. Now we've had, uh, professionals, fabricators trying to figure out what they were thinking. And I think, uh, they've done their best, you know, you know, to, you know, to interpret it. And I just, I'm not gonna hold my breath, but I think, uh, it will look good and we'll, you know, we'll, we'll be better for it and we'll, we'll be pleased when it is finished. But yeah, no more delays, no more guessing as to what we're going to get or something. You know what, you, you know what we expect and, you know, you go forward.
Rico, any comments?
I don't know if I can add too much. I share the comments of my colleagues and the disappointment and frustration that the mayor indicated. One of the things that I, um, voted for this, though, was a, a contribution toward the community on your agency, was about having something to the gateway. It was about an area in a neighborhood who had gone through the BART, who's gone through this and who deserved something in addition to this community as a whole. So I've heard hope and hope, to me, is not a plan, but I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna pray a little, that when the end comes and the result is finished, that we all stand back and say, looks good, job well done. I'm not gonna hold my breath either, but, uh, the, how we've gotten here and all the course of the way, we, I can go on and on, but I think it's been articulated and so, I agree, let's, let's, let's get it done and let's move on.
Okay. You have direction from council? Ken?
I just wanna thank, uh, Irene O'Connell for her, for her comments because, um, that's, gets us into more positive thought process. And so if, if you're satisfied with it, then I think we'll...
Any questions from staff?
No, I just wanna note that, uh, the city council has previously authorized fifty percent of the original one point two million dollar estimate. And we have, I believe, appropriated those funds accordingly. The, I, I wanna be clear that the, um, what I'm hearing from JPP staff is that even with the bolted, uh, fabrication, the total cost of the structure could go above the one point two million up to, I think I heard Mr. Billen say, one point three five million. And that, I just want to be clear that, um, given the many previous discussions about that potential for cost increase, that the council's authorization is comfortable up to fifty percent of that larger amount.
I'm reading it here and it says sheet metal all seams welded and ground, one point three five.
Pardon me?
It says sheet metal all seams welded and ground, one point three five. Sheet metal bolted shop welded, one point one.
Okay, so I guess...
Is that right, Rap?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, so then it, what would be helpful to staff is your expectation of a cost. And so what I'm, would, with that clarification then, what staff is understanding is that the expectation is an arch that is fabricated, at least with the bolts and with the appearance that's been presented here tonight, less than the one point two million dollar, a one point one million dollar, uh, level of authorization.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Right, and from JPP, that's what we're to expect?
Great. Thank you.
All right, all right. I am ten B. Receive report, waive the first reading and introduce two thousand thirteen fire and building code ordinances to be adopted by reference, set public hearing for adoption and adopt a resolution approving findings of necessity and need for amendments, deletions and additions to the codes.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Ruane and members of the city council. My name is David Waltering and the city's community development director. Tonight, staff from the community development department and fire department will make a joint presentation to you recommending initiating action toward adopting the two thousand thirteen state mandated California building codes with a number of proposed local amendments. Approximately every three years, the state of California updates its building and fire codes and mandates that cities and counties within the state adopt these codes. These codes apply minimum construction standards for all built structures throughout the state. The current two thousand thirteen California building codes have twelve parts, including the California building code, the California fire code, and the California green building standards codes. The prior building codes adoption cycle was referenced as the two thousand ten California building code cycle. All projects submitted on or before December thirty first, two thousand thirteen must comply with this previous adopted two thousand ten cycle. All projects submitted as of January one, two thousand fourteen must comply with the state mandated two thousand thirteen codes, which we will be discussing this evening. Cities and counties can adopt amendments to the state mandated California building codes to address unique climatic, geographical and topographical conditions. During the prior two thousand ten California building code cycle, the city of San Bruno did adopt a number of local amendments. The community development department's building division is recommending generally that those local amendments be carried forward with the current two thousand thirteen code adoption cycle. Staff is not proposing any new local amendments to the building codes with this cycle. However, staff is proposing several local amendments to the fire codes. In preparation for this current code adoption, staff has placed an announcement on the community development department website with links to the two thousand thirteen codes and helpful resources to explain their implementation. Moving forward with tonight's joint presentation, the city's chief building official, Roy Bronald, will describe highlights of the state mandated building codes as well as several proposed carryover local amendments. And then deputy fire chief Dave Downing and fire battalion chief Jim Allian will describe highlights of the proposed local amendments to the state mandated fire codes. The action that staff will be recommending with this presentation is to waive first reading, introduce the two thousand thirteen fire and building code ordinances attached to your staff report to be adopted by reference, set a public hearing date of February eleventh, two thousand fourteen for adoption of those ordinances, and then adopt this evening the resolution also attached to your staff report approving findings of necessity and need for amendments, deletions and additions to allow the proposed local amendments that will be described by staff later in this report. Now I would like to invite chief building official Roy Bronald to provide highlights of the state mandated building codes. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Honorable mayor, city councils, it's my pleasure and, sorry, it's my honor to be here tonight to present the two thousand thirteen code adoption. And I have a few items that I'd like to bring to your attention. Most of these are all adopted into the state code but are of interest. The very first item here is there are some changes to the two thousand thirteen California green building standards code. If you recall back in two thousand ten, uh, the mandatory measures of the green building code, which went into effect in two thousand ten, were directed direct at, uh, new construction. Now the mandatory measures apply to additions and alterations on residential and non-residential buildings. There are some thresholds that will, you'll cross for non-residential and there's some basic lines that you'll have to follow for residential. Outside of that, uh, one of the added items also under the new code adoption in the green building is Senate Bill four oh seven, which is a water conservation fixtures act, which requires that when you modify or, or add or alter a building, uh, and it is in a, and you're having plumbing fixtures in that area, you'll be required, if they're non-compliant fixtures, to be upgraded to water conserving fixtures. This only relates to, uh, properties that are built, or that were constructed on or after, uh, January, it only applies to properties built on or before January one nineteen ninety-four. That's, um, and there are some, um, exceptions to that. And, uh, the items that are accepted are obviously repairs and replacements because the three, uh, text items that the, uh, Senate bill requires is alterations, improvements or additions. So anything outside of that would not be included in that, uh, Senate bill, of that requirement. Another item that we have to deal with is also, uh, also along with the California energy code as it relates to the green building code. Back in two thousand ten, uh, this council asked, uh, staff to bring forward, uh, some voluntary tier measures, uh, for, uh, green building. What has happened since that time? We did adopt the tier one in two thousand ten. What's happened after two thousand ten is that the California Energy Commission has come up with a new process by which local jurisdictions can bring forward reach code items in green building. They require us to provide an analysis, a cost benefits analysis. And there's a criteria by which they establish that. Unfortunately, right now, the CEC does not have that ready for us or any other city. So it's our recommendation that this code cycle, uh, we don't bring forward, um, an adoption for a reach code item, uh, tier one or tier two until such time when the CEC does have that criteria available. criteria available for us to be able to review and see if we can make that work for the city. Another item here that's happened also in the energy code is that the improvements in the energy code in the lighting area is going to be substantial. It appears it'll be 25% residential improvement lighting, energy efficiency, and 30% for non-residential. And those are built into the basic code, those are adopted code items. So there are quite a few improvements above and beyond what was in 2010. But we'll have to talk about when we get the criteria for looking at any of the reach codes, the Tier 1s or Tier 2 items. One other real important item that's happened in this code cycle, as you all know, is that the California Building Code, Chapter 11, has now merged with ADA standards, which is the American Disabilities Act standards. For years, Title 24, California was a frontrunner in creating, you know, accessibility standards for the disabled, and the federal government would lead behind or follow behind. Now what's happened is, is if you look in Chapter 11B, the federal standards and the state standards have merged. This will streamline the process for designers and create a lack of confusion, a less confusion out there for stakeholders and users of buildings. It's, the whole movement was to try to reduce the lawsuits that were occurring out there for, you know, barriers to access to buildings. Those are the basic items of additions that have been brought to the code as adopted items. We have some other items that were brought in in 2010. And those items in 2010, we're asking council to consider bringing them forward for the 2013. And as you can see up on the, there are, those are the first three. One of them, of course, as you know, is related to protecting residential structures for air point noise impacts. The next item, of course, is amending the California Building Code to describe the responsibility of the building official to administer the code, which is really just basic language that covers us for those kind of decisions. Next section was amending the building code to describe penalties for violating the code. And outside of that, the next four items really were related to non-combustible materials in wildland urban interface areas. Amending the building code relating to minimum roof covering classification for all types of construction to be Class B. The code has changed in that area where there were only two sections where C roofs were allowed, so we're really only saying that in those two sections, we're replacing that with a B. So the code is kind of coming up with our standard, it's actually catching up with the city of San Bruno. The next item is the amended residential code to, for reinforced design requirements. And of course, last item is the residential code requiring or describing gypsum wallboard and plaster is not considered as brace wall panels. And those are the items that we would like to bring forward into the 2013 code.
At this point in the joint presentation, our next step would be to move forward and for the fire department staff to come forward and provide highlights of the proposed local amendments to the fire code. We could though, at this point, if the council so directs, take any questions regarding the presentation thus far regarding the building code.
If I, if I could, just for clarity, the energy code revisions will not take place until July 1st?
That is correct.
Okay, but all others, green building and everything?
Correct. Any items that aren't attached to the energy code go into effect January 1.
Okay.
Most of the proposed 2013 fire code adoption is a inclusion of previously adopted language or changes to code section numberings that clean up the ordinance. The local amendments that are being proposed to help both firefighters responding to emergencies and increase life safety of citizens within the community. There are six amendments that we'll be discussing that deal with a variety of fire safety issues. The most important issue deals with new residential retrofit sprinkler requirement. Currently, the fire code mandates sprinklers in all new residential construction. What is being proposed is a retrofit sprinkler requirement that is triggered by a percentage threshold dealing with alterations, remodels, or additions to one and two family properties. Why are we doing this? Because we feel that fire sprinklers save lives. Some of the important facts that, that demonstrate the efficiency and effectiveness of fire sprinklers is that industry standards show that installing a sprinkler system increases, I'm sorry, installing a sprinkler system into a residence increases survival rate in a fire by 97%. Modern fire sprinkler systems are proven to be reliable as statistics show an accidental discharge rate of less than one in 16 million sprinkler heads that are currently in service. And residential fire sprinkler statistics also show that 90% of all sprinkler activations involve only one to two sprinkler heads being discharged during an active fire. At this time, I'll turn it over Fire Marshal Jim Allen, who will discuss the details of the amendments that are being proposed.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council. This evening, as mentioned by Chief Downing, the fire department is bringing forth for your consideration our staff recommendation for six newly proposed local amendments to the fire code. The first recommendation is to modify our previously adopted definition section to include the term "sky lantern." These are balloon-type unmanned devices with fuel source, typically a candle or sterno type of material, which are released untethered into the sky during certain cultural ceremonies. We are also asking that the use of these devices be prohibited within the city. Staff is also bringing forth a proposal for new building addressing requirements to assist with identification of buildings during emergencies, specifically rules pertaining to the local, location and size of numbering. Requirements would involve number size based upon distance from the street. These requirements, parallel language typically used now as project conditions and would not be retroactive to existing properties not be modified by change, business, or construction. Our next staff recommendation is the adoption of language regarding key boxes or NOX boxes, as they're better known in the industry, for granting fire personnel access to commercial properties during emergencies. Once again, we currently provide similar requirements as project conditions. Also proposed is requiring fire command rooms in new buildings to be constructed with at least one exterior door for firefighter safety. Staff is also proposing that new elevators be installed without shunt trips, which are electrical devices. This would prevent the potential shutdown of elevators during firefighter operations and has been added as a fire comment to San Bruno's construction projects for many years. The language would correct potential fire sprinkler and fire alarm conflicts during building construction as a result. Perhaps the most significant local amendment being proposed by staff is the modification of the current San Bruno fire sprinkler retrofit ordinance. Regarding commercial properties, the existing San Bruno language is proposed to remain, with the exception of modification to the language that would grant the fire chief the ability to require the installation of a fire sprinkler system if a change in use or occupancy creates a more hazardous life, fire, safety condition in the space where the change in use or occupancy is proposed. The existing language requires the addition of fire sprinklers when improvements occur to an existing building over 7,500 square feet gross floor area and there is a permit for construction valued in excess of $30,000 in a one-year period. Regarding residential properties, which are one and two family dwellings, new language is proposed to require fire sprinklers related to retrofits in additions meeting a prescribed threshold. The language would require the retrofit of an entire existing one and two family dwelling with an automatic fire sprinkler system when additions, remodels, or alterations involve 70% or more of the existing or cumulative square footage of the entire new structure regardless of its size. Would also require sprinklers when alterations to buildings increase the size to more than 3,000 square feet and/or involve buildings over three stories, or 33 feet in height to the sill plate. The 70% calculation would be inclusive of a 36-month window of work performed on the residence should construction projects be distributed over time. The remaining proposed modifications reflect existing adopted language and include the renumbering of pages and sections to coincide with current addition of the fire code.
Okay, Fire Marshal Allen has presented a lot of sort of technical terms that deal with basically the retrofit of the sprinkler ordinance and the commercial changes that give the option to the fire chief. What does this ordinance really mean? It means that for the most part, we align ourselves with some of the other agencies within the county. This is the same ordinance that has been adopted by Millbrae. And based upon my experience in Millbrae over the past 10 years, the properties that are, that will be required to be sprinklers are basically resemble new construction. These homes are usually untenable, they're usually down to the studs. In my experience over the past 10 years, these houses are very comparable to new construction. Very rarely do you have somebody who's going to do a major construction to a property and not affect more than 70%. Usually if they're going to do 70%, they're going to do the whole house. So basically, we're aligning this particular ordinance to sprinkle a whole house that basically is incomparable to new construction. The other thing is, we reviewed the tapes of the sprinkler ordinance proposal that was brought before the council back in 2007. We believe that we listened to the concerns that were, and the issues that were proposed during that ordinance and addressed them with this new proposal. We believe that this is the best option moving forward that, you know, protects the lives of the citizens and also helps us align with neighboring agencies within San Mateo County. At this time, we'd be glad to answer any questions you may have regarding any part of the ordinance or what was presented in the report.
I know you mentioned specifically Millbrae, but since we're closely aligned with Central County, what's the deal in Hillsborough and Burlingame?
Actually, they have a more stringent sprinkler ordinance. Theirs is 50% and, pardon?
Yes, there's, there's a little, when it comes to Burlingame's, it's 2,000 square foot with 750-foot addition for residential.
Mm-hmm.
So, just to kind of follow up on that question, the vast majority of jurisdictions within San Mateo County have gone actually to a 50% rule for residential retrofit. For what it's worth, the, currently there are 16 of the 20 jurisdictions within San Mateo County that do have a residential fire retro split, retro, retro.
Fit.
Spit it out, Jim. Okay. Ordinance of some form or another. We're coming in with what we believe to be a relatively conservative approach because we understand that there is some concerns that the city brings forward with this. And basically, as Chief Downing was saying, we're patterning this off of Millbrae's adoption and use, actually it's very similar to what was just recently approved in that jurisdiction and has been the basis of their fire sprinkler retrofit ordinance for some time now. We chose the 70% numeral and is why I feel it would be appropriate in this city, is that we have a tendency to have a lot of smaller homes in this community. A 70% threshold is a quite large threshold, and as Chief Downing stated, typically when we've run across homes that are, that have met that 70% threshold, they're basically stripped homes. I mean, you could sort of picture, these are homes that are not typically habited anymore. These are homes that the sheetrock has been ripped out. These are homes that are, have new wiring going in them, new electrical going on them. Anyway, we're simply requesting at this point, since the homes are actually opened up, that it's a good opportunity at this point to go ahead and add plastic fire sprinkler piping to these homes. We are not just, I just want to make a point that we're not going after, or our intent is not to destroy somebody's house simply because they're putting a small addition or onto their house, adding a bedroom, doing a kitchen remodel. We're not even attempting to go there. We're looking for big, major projects. Basically, these are the projects that you would typically drive by, look at them and go, what were they thinking, why didn't they just knock the whole thing down anyway? That's what we're really looking at here.
Anything else on sprinklers while we're on them? Ken, Rico? I mean.
I have the utmost respect for fire personnel, firefighters, but I'm, I'm against, I'm against ordinances to impose on people that want to improve their homes. My question is, if it is, and I don't want to put dollar signs on lives, it is an economic issue. But my problem is, is that we're renewing a fire code, we're renewing how many codes? One of which is the 2013 fire code. Why isn't there stricter guidelines in the fire code?
The fire code, just for starters, the, when it comes to residential building, remember that the fire code's going to require that you put fire sprinklers in any new, any new home, right off the bat. So it leaves local municipalities the option to figure out how they're going to best deal with retrofit situations. Keep in mind that some cities such as Sillsboro have homes that are four, five, 6,000 square feet in size. You have homes here in this jurisdiction that are typically smaller, and it gives us the leeway to kind of direct what we feel is the best fit for our community here. As, as Chief Downing stated, the addition of fire sprinklers in a home, take the, the life safety risk, and I know we're not talking numbers here specific, but fire sprinklers typically in a residential fire will give you a 50% chance of successfully getting out of a home. That number, as Dave stated, goes up to 97% with the addition of fire sprinklers in the home. So it's, it's quite an increase in safety when it comes to adding these, these, this, this option into a home. I know dollars is an important factor and I respect that, and that's why we're coming with such a, a large number to the table. And we, trust me, what we're not trying to do is take the average home where somebody has simply remodeled something and start breaking apart their sheetrock walls. That's not what we're after. We are truly targeting these homes that are basically gutted shells to begin with. These are homes that typically, as I stated, they're sheetrock removed, they're wooden stud homes, their ceilings have already been pulled in these. These are, these are shell homes. They've made major modifications to internal walls. We don't want to inconvenience, we don't want to inconvenience our community by saying, "Look, we want you to start punching holes throughout your walls." That's not what we're here for. And I think this is why we're bringing this particular proposal forward for you. I know it's very different than what you were, you've been given in the past where it was simply as an additional 500-square-foot rule or whatever the case may be. In this particular situation, for example, you could have a 1,000-square-foot home. If you don't alter the inside of the home, you could add another 1,000 square feet to this house and still not be impacted by this. Once again, this is very minimal impact that we're trying to put on the community here. It would only be when you exceed 70% of damage or remodel, or renovation, I should say, to the existing home that this would even come into play. And as Chief Downing stated, and because I, once again, I take care of Millbrae as well, when I'm in those homes, they're very seldom at a 70% mark. It's very seldom that you have to make some kind of a judgment call. Typically, these homes are gutted. These, this is basically new construction that already has a roof on it at this point. And, I mean, not to keep on beating here, but. And, I mean, not to keep on beating here, but you're looking at about a one to three percent cost per square foot to do this. You're talking relatively... You know, I look at the permits that are coming through. A typical residential home of this nature is going to run somewhere between five and seven thousand dollars for retrofit when it's in this condition. So, it's typical to an upgrade in flooring or an upgrade in counters at this point. It's not the major expense that you would typically find in a lot of these resolution required or requests, that they're ripping apart walls that are already pre-existing, which really drives the cost up.
My big question is, how many house fires have we had? Do we typically have each year? And how many of them are of new houses or large houses?
I've investigated fires approximately once every six to eight weeks I'm called in, including the fire that we just had on San Mateo Avenue, which I might add was stopped by fire sprinklers in the attic of that building. So, it's typically the homes that we've investigated, or that I go out to investigate because I also do our fire investigations, most of the homes that we've had in the last several years have not been sprinkled buildings, sadly. It's unfortunate because when we're talking about a dollar cost advantage, we use twenty percent... Or, I'm sorry, twenty times the amount of water. Once we have a fire that's actually in a residential building that's non-sprinkler, then we would have had to use if there were indeed fire sprinklers at the time of the fire. However, the vast majority are... Have been without fire sprinklers, which is what we're trying to change here. We're trying to slowly make a change and start bringing more and more homes, more and more families into a matter of safety at this point.
I just have a real concern with... You know, the staff reports say... And I can appreciate that you don't want to burden or have undue burdens on people improving their homes in various ways. You know, it is the big... You know, the big remodels or the gutted homes and the big additions and things. And you state in the staff report that that's only typically... That you only foresee five to ten homes...
Yes.
Per year.
And that would be typical of what we have in San Mateo.
So, why are we targeting these five to ten property owners? There are a hundred-year-old homes, sixty, seventy-year-old homes that will probably never get improved in this community. And they... I would assume they would be the bigger risk. Now, we're talking about a seventy percent improvement. Homes are being... You know, whether or not they have sprinklers or not, they're better materials and, you know, with green building, they're not... There's not a lot of combustible materials, you know, now. And so, they're almost safer. They're almost safer than the older homes that have sprinklers, I could argue. But five to ten homes... Because, you know, I'm an architect and I'm the one, whatever this council decides on, whatever town I work in, I'm the bearer of bad news. Some of them take it as bad news, some of them take it as sale of V. That's what we have to do. But I just think... I mean, we're going to talk about something with, you know, with sewer laterals and point of sales and as these things turn over. And it could take years and years to have a safe community. I've got a brand-new... Practically a brand-new home that's been improved and next door I could have the biggest fire hazard and across the street I could have the biggest fire hazard that will never reach the safety that my home has, you know, been improved.
Respectfully, I understand your point. I need to remind, however, that if that home were built from scratch, the state sees it fit to require that that building be fire sprinkled. That's above and beyond us because of the safety factor that would be involved with the new construction. Now, mind you, we're not going to catch every building. There's no perfect ordinance. And it would be not proactive, in my opinion, I'm sure with any of our staff's opinion, to go into that hundred-year-old building, start ripping it apart to retrofit it with fire sprinklers. It's just not an opportune time to do it. Which is why we're coming forward with the proposal that we are coming forward with. We are targeting those homes that are nearly new construction. We're targeting the ones that we have the easy access, where plumbers are already pulling plastic through to modify plumbing and electricians are pulling conduit through them to modify electrical. We can't catch them all, but if we, as we stated, catch five to ten of them per year, that's fifty to a hundred of them over the course of time as we start to reflect here over ten years. We're not going to catch them all, but everyone we do catch makes the home safer, makes the family safer that's in that home.
My last question is that, being with Millbrae, it's my understanding that a thirty-year-old ordinance where if you've got a permit of very minimal value that you would have to put a sprinkler in the garage, and that... Correct me if I'm wrong, that that was just rescinded?
Yes, it was. I rescinded that. I do not believe in partial fire sprinkler systems, which is why I was not a real opponent to the previous fire proposals that have been brought to you. This is why we're going after a full retrofit for a building. I don't believe that... My personal feeling was that in the fires I investigated in Millbrae, which I had investigated garage fires last year, fire sprinklers that were non-professionally installed in the garage prevented a false sense of security of the homeowner. People thought that they had proper coverage in a situation where in reality, when the fire actually occurred, they did not. I went to a recent... Within the last several months, I went to a property that had a forty-foot-long garage and had its fire sprinkler on one on either side. Was not sufficient coverage for that fire... That particular setting. However, the homeowner felt that it was well... They were well-protected. I do not believe in half systems. I don't like doing that. If you're going to do it, do it right, which is why we're coming with this approach now to fully retrofit at a large threshold.
Just for the history of that, is that that was put in by the chief, a previous chief, when the council had previously rescinded a retrofit sprinkler ordinance that had been adopted prior. They decided they wanted to do something, so they put a sprinkler in the garage, like Jim said. This was giving people a false sense of security that they put a sprinkler in their garage. As you know, most garages have a huge fire load with one sprinkler head in the garage. It really was almost like putting a garden hose on the thing. Wasn't a engineered system that would put out the fire.
If I may add one more thing. In addition to being a fire marshal, I'm a licensed general B-class contractor. I'm allowed to build this building. I'm not allowed to do the fire sprinkler system in it. What Millbrae was requesting of those that pulled permits was to have somebody come in who is not a licensed sprinkler contractor and do a retrofit to their existing plumbing to put in something that I, as a licensed general B-class contractor, am not allowed to do. That was another reason I wanted to pull it.
Any questions? Irene?
I have questions on another section of this. On E, you have fire command control rooms in new buildings are required to be constructed with at least one exterior door for firefighter safety. I have no idea what it is.
All right. Understood. A fire... The fire control room is a location in a commercial property where the main fire alarm control panel... Where our panels are, where we have access to such things as ventilation systems, fire alarm systems, different... It's like in a major hotel, for example. Tanfran Mall is a prime example, and I'll use that as our example here. What we're doing is, and this, by the way, is something that was... That's been brought upon by other jurisdictions as well in San Mateo County. We're fortunate to have the fire marshal from the city of Burlingame and Hillsborough here this evening, and this I know is something that they were working on too, adopting. The idea is that we want to have access, if there's a fire burning, to have a door that we can get out of in case things go really bad inside the building. A prime example, for example, where this doesn't happen is, for example, Tanfran. Tanfran's fire command room is buried pretty deeply inside the building. We have to go through fire corridors to get to it, and we just want to have the ability that if something happens that we can get out of the building quickly.
Okay. And this is on new construction?
New construction only, yes.
Okay. On the... And one more. On the building addresses identification, I know it's not for older buildings that already exist, but we... Mr. Reichel, we had talked about it as a project that crime prevention could be doing. Is there a way with this, either with this ordinance or some method of encouraging people whose houses have either no lettering and no numbering? I was trying to find somebody yesterday. I could not find them at all by braille. I had to finally get to them. And I can imagine some firefighters or policemen who are not familiar with area and knowing, you know, trying to find a specific house can't do it. And it would be a tragedy if something happened because of that.
That's exactly why we're doing this. We have... It's for emergency location. As proposed, up to thirty-six feet would be four inches in height. Thirty-six to fifty feet would be six inches in height, and when you exceed fifty inches, you'd go to a nine-inch sizing. This is to give you a larger scale for this very purpose. The... This parallels what we currently request in project conditions for most projects that are new projects anyway. We're simply trying to come up with common language that is similar to other neighboring jurisdictions as well. It's a... We don't want to become too obtrusive with huge numbering, but at the same time, we want the ability to be able to find a location.
Absolutely. So, this is for only new construction, though?
Correct.
Would it be for remodels as well?
Right. Yeah, let me correct that. It's for when there's a change. If you have a new business compliance inspection, for example, when we go out to do a business inspection for a new tenant, for example, on El Camino Real, typically at that point, that's when we have them upgrade the number of sizing if they have not already done so. We don't retroactively go in and start picking people that have been in business for fifteen, twenty years. It's a change of occupancy, a change of business.
Okay. What I'm suggesting is we need to beef this up even more than what it is now. So, maybe we could pass this and look next year at something stronger and more pervasive.
The building numbers on the cinema at Tanfran are thirty-six inches tall, for example.
Yeah, that one's good.
So, just to give you an idea, perspective, they look like they're about this tall when you sit down below, but I was part of that project, they are actually three-feet-tall numbers. So, these are minimum standards.
Okay. So, put it on a tickler somewhere that we look at something stronger next year.
If I might, it sounds like the council member and perhaps Citizens Crime Prevention Committee might be interested in looking at ways that we could disseminate information and encourage people what the standard is and that they might, because their house is hard to find, or because they're interested in improving their safety, simply take that step to... It's a very relatively cheap item to add to a home, whether you're remodeling or not. So, that may be an outreach and public education effort that we could undertake in the meantime before coming back with some beefed-up requirements.
Okay. Maybe as people... As the building inspectors go out to inspect different things, they can...
Great idea.
Give them a handout that says, "Oh, by the way..."
Yeah. I think David just told me that if a building is found to be non-addressed, code enforcement goes out and ensures that they receive some sort of a warning or, you know, that they have to put an address on their property.
But that's for commercial? Or is that for anybody?
I swear, it took me five houses to find the right place yesterday.
Having worked in fire suppression up in Station Fifty-Two's district in the fog, trust me, I understand how difficult it can be to find a building addresses in the middle of the night.
David?
Pardon me. The code does require that all properties be properly addressed. So, if we have a property that is not properly addressed, we should learn about that and send code enforcement officers out and make sure it's properly addressed.
Okay.
So, what you find here in the proposed local amendment from the fire department has to do with increasing the size or adjusting the size, but in any case, properties must be properly addressed per current code.
And what is that... What does that mean, properly addressed?
It's in the code and there are specific dimensions and locations for being addressed. And so, if we find that a property is not addressed, there's no address on the property, we would send out a code enforcement officer, review the code and make sure that the property owner places the address on the property in a visible location, meeting code requirements.
Okay. And maybe we could work with crime prevention when they do their table at Tanfran? That could be a piece of literature that goes out because I know most people have no clue.
Okay.
And I would hate to penalize them just because we haven't made an effort to educate people.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Chief Chair?
Ken?
I just want to mention, most of the project, remodeling projects that I do, the requirement, and I believe it's local ordinance, requires an illuminated address.
Yes. That's been a project condition, as I mentioned earlier, for fire for a number of years. Actually, I have a stamp that says it. We're just trying to clean the language.
I want to... I hate to get back to fire sprinkler ordinance, but I want to touch on... You gave some options in the staff report, and I just want to note, you did put in alternative proposal three, which is to propose a voluntary program and, you know, more of an awareness and, you know, seek out, you know, what the pleasure of the public is, the residents. Has that happened in other jurisdictions? And what is your... What's your feeling about that? I mean, I know... I realize you've probably been around when these jurisdictions have transitioned, and what if, you know, if this vote goes in favor of approving this new ordinance, what is the public's reaction going to be?
Well, obviously, we presented the proposal that we were bringing forward because we feel most adamantly that that's the way that things should happen. I could tell you, just having worked in Millbrae where they have this exact same ordinance that are already adopted, people generally know what's coming. They know. If you know... You know that if you rip half your house apart, or ceding half your house, if you basically gut your house, it's not a surprise to people that they have to do this. I have yet actually to have anybody that didn't... That wasn't on board with it. As a matter of fact, I think people... I use this example, maybe it's not real appropriate here, but I'm going to use it anyway. We all go to the doctors for our annual physical and the doctor sends us for a blood test. We don't want to go get a blood test, but we do it because the doctor tells us we're supposed to do it and we're okay with it when we do it. And this is sort of the same thing. They realize that really the building should be brought up at that time to a certain standard. They just sort of need somebody to kind of push them along with it. That's all. And like I said, it's not something that we've really had... I mean, Dave could speak for it for more years than I can, but it's really something that I've surprisingly not had a lot of resistance to.
Yeah. In the ten or twelve years that I dealt with all the reconstruction projects, I can't think of one person that complained when they knew... When they did the submittal that sprinklers were required. Like I said, for the most part, all the houses, the remodels that we're dealt with were basically major remodels that were completely... If you close your... This is the way I... This is the analogy I give. If you closed your eyes, walked into the front door and opened them, you would... And you were the layperson, you would say, "This is new construction." And what we did was we said, "If new construction requires sprinklers, so do these homes." And like I said, I haven't had... There wasn't one complaint in the years that I've been there where sprinklers were required on these particular properties.
And once again, and not to belabor this, I know you have a busy agenda this evening. However, we picked a high number to begin with because we don't want a lot of ambiguity in it. These people realize these homes have major work that is being done in them to begin with. That's why we didn't seek the fifty percent rule.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else from staff? Connie?
No. I think we've hashed this through pretty thoroughly.
Right. No, I appreciate all the points. Ken is kind of on the front end of it, designing things, and you guys are on the, sometimes the sad end of it, of cleaning things up. So, I understand both points. I think it's... I think it's frankly, it's like some of the other things we do here, maybe not too popular but necessary. So that's just my opinion, but any discussion by the council or action?
I'll move, I'll introduce the ordinance as it stands. Oh, sorry, waive the first reading?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second to waive the first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Okay.
And I'll introduce ordinance? Is that what we're doing?
Right, so there, if I may, I'll just jump in. This is one of those backwards procedures that you're not used to because it's adoption of the codes by reference. So we just want two actions. One of them would be to introduce the ordinances, and then the second action would be to adopt a resolution approving findings of necessity and the need for amendments, deletions and additions to the code. So two separate actions, introduce the ordinance and then adopt the resolution.
Okay, so I'll introduce the resolution.
The ordinance.
Ordinance.
Yes.
You just said it, went right out of my brain. The ordinance.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye.
Okay, and now you need?
An adoption of the resolution approving the findings of necessity and need for amendments, deletions and additions to the code.
What you just said. I moved to adopt the resolution. Or do, no?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ibarra?
No.
Vice Mayor Medina?
No.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye.
Okay.
Oh, I, I have one more question. I'm sorry. It has nothing to do with this really, but Dave, with the water, water use reduction, changing out the showerheads and all those types of things, are we still offering the low-flush toilet rebates? Are those still available? Do you know? Or Clara? Somebody, I know somebody knows.
Yes, we are.
Okay, great. So I believe Lowe's has the advertisements and I think they're still on our website or it's on somebody's website, but there are rebates. So if you have to change out your toilet for a low-flush toilet, you can get, I think it's up to seventy-five dollars. So it's a really good deal and you save a lot of money on water.
Chair.
Rico?
No, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, at this point, obviously I've, I've voted no. I do want to say a few things. I want to compliment Mr. Allen on your presentation, your information, your knowledge and your heartfelt passion on this, and the same to the deputy chief. At this point, in my mind, I'm torn between heart and, shall we say, the heart and the mind. So that's why the no vote. However, it is not to say that when this is readdressed, or we have our fifth colleague here, that at that time I may not have a reconsideration or have gathered a little more clarity for me that will make a solid decision.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just wanted to clarify the effect of the city council's two-to-two vote on adopting the resolution. That means that there were not sufficient votes for that resolution to pass. And so there, you do have a number of options. One of the options, Mr. Waltering is, is going to explain to you right now. The other option, if you don't want to do those things tonight, is to bring back that resolution at the next meeting for review when there's an additional council member. And then also at that time, we would bring back adoption of the, of the ordinances there, they're having already been introduced tonight.
All right. David?
So alternatives for you to consider include, there are a number of local amendments that are being proposed for your consideration tonight. So an option for you is perhaps to remove one or more of those local amendments and then go forward and vote again on the resolution. So that may be one option. Another would be to modify the language would be yet another option. It seems as though a couple of the council members may have concerns about a particular local amendment. So one possibility would be to, tonight, set that proposed amendment aside and then go forward and vote on the resolution without that particular local amendment.
Councilmembers that voted no, do you agree with that?
I would agree to go with that recommendation. Pull the fire sprinklers, let's go forward with the remainder of it, bring that back at a future date when we have five colleagues.
So if I may, just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, the result of that action would, would then be to foreclose the city council's review of these with a full five-member council at the next meeting?
Okay.
Well, my understanding is that, could, could we do that tonight? Not with five, not with the fire sprinkler situation, but can we pass all, all the rest of them?
You, you could, but then that would require us to bring back at the next meeting a resolution that would adopt a local amendment for further consideration of the fire sprinkler matter.
Okay. I, I think the fire sprinkler matter is, is very important and should be addressed by the entire city council. So let's bring it back.
All right. So, so then the way things stand right now is that the resolution, if you, well, I think that the way things stand is the resolution has not been adopted unless you're, somebody makes another motion. So given that, then staff would bring back at your next meeting the identical resolution for adoption as well as adoption of the ordinances that have been introduced tonight.
Okay, fair enough.
So could we?
Yes.
Could I introduce a resolution to approve the amendments except for the fire sprinkler proposal?
You, you, you could certainly do that and that would-
I'm all in favor of all the other amendments, the standard amendments.
That would then preclude the council from voting on or taking action on the fire sprinkler ordinance separately at the next meeting.
I'm not following. Okay, well, we'll just, we'll just, why don't we just bring it back for everybody to-
Very good, understood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item ten C, receiver report on the fiscal year two thousand thirteen fourteen capital improvements program work plan.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the item before you tonight comes back to you at the request of the city council following your review of the capital improvement program and one-year budget at two study sessions that were held in October of two thousand thirteen and your approval of that budget and that capital, that five-year capital improvement program, which occurred on November twelfth of two thousand and thirteen. At that time, the city council requested that we return with a opportunity for the city council to take at your pleasure additional consideration of items that are included in that program. In order to facilitate your interest in any discussion that you might wish to have, staff has prepared a fairly lengthy and comprehensive attachment to the staff report, which lays out in various categories, the work program associated with the delivery of the capital improvement program and particularly the work program that is expected to occur over the next six-month period with a focus on the action items that will be coming back to the city council in many of the different projects that are shown in the capital budget. I apologize for the length of that attachment. There was no simple way to summarize a capital improvement program of over a hundred and thirty million dollars and approximately seventy projects that has been previously before you. It is an ambitious work program and one that we believe is necessary to the vitality and the adequate service of the infrastructure that this community relies on. So staff has produced this information. In order to facilitate your conversation, we stand ready to answer any specific questions or to take any further direction from the city council.
Any questions of staff on this report?
Yes. The big-ticket item, five-point-one million dollars. What do we anticipate coming to us? It says the status that there's estimates and cost analysis. How, this is, this is one of the big items that, you know, we raise rates for. And I guess the big question is, I, we need to be sold, I need to be sold on it also. We've read about it in the capital improvement review and so for the budget, but I just want to anticipate when, you know, when is that going to happen?
Yes, thank you for that question. This item was the subject of one of our more detailed, short presentations as part of the budget study sessions that occurred in October. And staff fully and completely understands that the city council will need an opportunity to dive into this in, in a fair amount more detail and to understand the analysis that staff has completed in order to be comfortable with a, a decision that implicates a five-million-dollar expenditure, plus or minus. Our intent is to produce a specific scope of work along with the additional detail in the cost-benefit analysis and the cost, the recovery period analysis, because it is our recommendation to you that this project will recover its cost over a period of time by more accurate water meter readings, as well as the efficiency of those readings being done electronically and automatically. So the next step is to present that analysis to the infrastructure subcommittee, which consists of two members of the city council, the council member Ibarra not being one of them, but to allow that for a more detailed conversation in that venue and then to return to the city council with presentation and discussion in order that you can become more comfortable with that item.
Okay. Not that every other project is, is equally important. This is a big project. It's, it's citywide. What I don't want to do is get called, you know, called into a subcommittee meeting a few days before it goes to press to, you know, for the, for the rest of the city council. I'd like to be up to speed probably right now as to where it is and so that as we go along, we can, you know, have a better understanding so that when it's time for action, you know, we're, you know, it's very clear that we're either on board or we have concerns.
Right. So what I would suggest is that this is an item that in addition to the subcommittee discussion, be presented to the city council prior to being presented for action, to be presented for review and analysis of the work that staff has developed so that you have an opportunity to understand it, to discuss it before we ask you to take an action. Director can give you a more precise update about exactly where we are and what that timeline is.
Honorable mayor, council member, good evening. For, on this project, only just preparation for the inclusion of the project in the CIP was done, including requesting proposal and presentation and discussion by the supplier of this equipment. Will be additional work from this point on to be ready. All of the cost-benefits analysis already were done. This has a critical time element also that all, all of our water mirrors has to be replaced right now. And this would be an opportunity investment also, that that investment will be necessary to be made, replacing our water mirror system that they really reached their end of life. This would be a good time to discuss this with what kind of system or what kind of mirroring system would make the most sense to replace our system. In the, in about two months, the department staff will be in the position to make the presentation to the subcommittee and also to the full council and to start to proceed full speed with the implementation of the project if the council will support it.
Like I, like I tried to explain earlier, I don't want it to be almost a done deal before the subcommittee comes to the table.
Was no more work other than all of the preparatory work to include this project properly in our capital improvement.
I don't want to micromanage. I don't need to be an engineer or something, but I mean, as far as the, the impacts on the community, the financial ramifications and things. Yeah, thank you.
To the chair, very quick, just as, I don't need to follow up right now. The wildland fire hazard mitigation program, I know it's a thirty-six thousand, that's something that I've brought up in the past just, and I know it says ongoing to evaluate, but I just know that there's a lot of folks out there that are concerned with areas. Obviously, it's not a lot of money. City manager and I have talked, doesn't go very far to mitigate the concerns and the potential hazards, so I would just like to keep an eye on that as far as if more, more is needed or more needs to be done. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, we're going to go on to item ten D in a moment, but I think it's appropriate to take a less than a five-minute break because we still have five more items to go.
Like to call the meeting back to order, please, and we're going to go right onto item ten D, receiver report and provide direction to staff regarding an ordinance to regulate the inspection, repair and replacement of private orangeburg sewer laterals at the time of sale of residential property.
Honorable mayor, council members, the purpose of the presentation tonight is to seek policy direction from you for the regulation of the private lateral at point of sale. In the beginning, I will give you some general background on this issue and also factual information regarding this matter. And then city attorney Mark Zafarano will share with you, will give you an update how they, how other agencies around us regulate the private lateral at point of sale. I have also here tonight Dennis Bash, who is the service manager for sewer system, and he will be able to help us with any answer what you might have. And also I have here for the first time Jim Burge, who is, his second week as deputy for operation and maintenance for public services. The city provide sewer collection services for our city residents and the city is responsible for effective management of this system. What effective management of the, of a sewer system really mean, that you want to keep the sewer in the system and also to minimize any additional inflow in the system by rainwater or groundwater. Considering this objective, that how important is to keep the sewer in and anything to flow, to flow in the system, the structural integrity of the system is very important. The system as, as a whole is made of sewer mains and also, and you see on the board basically representation, you already saw this sketch before, but you see the sewer main running in the middle of the strip and also the connection to each home, which is called private lateral, the connection between the home and to the main. Based on the existing regulation and city policy, is the responsibility of the property owner to maintain, operate and replace if it's necessary the private lateral, except if a standard cleanout is installed close to the property line, then will become the city's responsibility to maintain the so-called lower lateral, which is between the cleanout and the main. Considering the importance of the integrity of the system is very important from what material this system is made of. Considering the age of the city, the majority of our system is made of- Considering the age of the city, the majority of our system is made of clay and only just in the main replaced in the last 10, 15 years are made of PVC or other plastic material. During the years between the 40s and the 60s, due to lack of available material, a so-called orangeburg pipe was manufactured by the pipe supplier, in essence, made of pressed wood chip, wood chips. You see a very small piece on the table, I would not, that is orangeburg pipe, exactly how is those private lateral are made of. I would not recommend for you to touch or to go too close, that they are not quite that sanitary at this time. You have also a map of the city showing the evolution of the city and the years of construction. And mainly, the homes built between the 40s and 60s are, the map is not very clear, but you can see that the years are specified. You see this area here between San Bruno and Angus, and then mainly all of this area, those areas between 280 in essence and Skyline Boulevard were built between the 40s and 60. Our homes stock in the city is about 12,000 residential homes, of which about half of those were built between the 40s and 60s, which basically is a good representation you can see on the map also. Due to the age of our system, very high number of SSOs were experienced by the city and in 2011, in order for the city to settle litigation with baykeepers, entered in a agreement and signed a consent decree. According to this agreement in the consent decree, if our sewer system has capacity deficiencies, then the city should consider a inspection of the private lateral and the repair or the replacement of those private lateral at point of sale. What you have before you is a summary of a possible proposed process for your consideration that any property owner with the intent to transfer property which was built between the 40s and 60s would request a certification of compliance from the city and subsequently a visual inspection will be made if the pipe is made of orangeburg or not. If not, then will be issued the certificate of compliance. If is made of orangeburg, then a video inspection will be necessary. If the pipe is defective, then will be required by the property owner to either repair or replace to the satisfaction of the city. And then after this time, then the certificate of compliance will be issued by the city. This could add on additional costs depending of the special circumstances or the situation of that specific home, on additional cost between $150 up to a little bit over $10,000. And also could add additional one month, up to one month to the process itself. I will let now Mark Zafarano to update you on what other agencies are doing around us.
Thank you, Clara. Just briefly, it's important to understand how this ordinance that's proposed differs from the ordinances that your neighboring cities have adopted. And primarily, this ordinance reflects the precise language of paragraph 61 in our baykeeper consent decree. And the reason why that's important is because that paragraph was narrowly tailored to meet the specific requirements of the city of San Bruno. If you look at other ordinances, say for example Millbrae's, you'll find that inspection and replacement of sewer laterals are required, well, let's see, it says if you add a plumbing fixture to the property. So the ordinances in those locations are much, in Millbrae, is much broader than the one that is required of us under the baykeeper decree. And that's the same for South San Francisco and other neighboring communities. They have different standards about applying inspection and then replacement of those, of laterals in circumstances where the homes are being remodeled, not just when they're being sold. The baykeeper consent decree that we're obligated to follow simply requires that the homes had been built between 1940 and 1960 and that they have orangeburg pipe that's defective. It's only under those circumstances that the property owner is required to complete the repair, either before the close of escrow, or the ordinance also allows up to a six-month extension upon application. So the ordinance that we're proposing is the ordinance that's required by the settlement agreement, and it also contains all of the features of the other ordinances that were adopted by your neighboring cities, for example, the six-month extension, there's exemptions if you've already replaced it in the last five years, and other things that we've talked about in the staff report. So I think that this ordinance is staff's best effort to comply precisely with what the baykeeper consent decree required us to do. Be happy to answer any questions.
To the chair, recently, last year, South San Francisco, the city council voted down a point-of-sale ordinance on sewer laterals. And do you have any details on that as far as why they did that? And also, I guess, the follow-up is what has been the, what has been the argument on point-of-sale, point-of-sale ordinances?
Well, I think the main argument in favor of them is that they capture repairs of defective sewer laterals that would otherwise not be caught until the pipe fails catastrophically. Most of these orangeburg pipes are pipes that have been in the ground for many, many years and that are leaking to some degree. And the situation right now is that if you're a property owner and you're selling your home and you have an orangeburg pipe in there, the chances are it's defective and it's leaking. What's happening at the sale now is that the cost of a catastrophic failure of that pipe is being shifted to the buyer. And the real effect of these ordinances to make sure that as between the buyer and seller at the point of the transaction, they can negotiate how that repair is going to be done so that you don't have leaking for perhaps months and years on end, and then when it fails catastrophically, the buyer is stuck with a $5,000 to $7,000 repair job.
And the six-month extension allows for it not holding up the sale?
That's correct.
And just to follow up on the first part of your question, it is my understanding that South San Francisco had a private lateral point-of-sale ordinance as part of the agreement with the baykeepers. South city met the requirement of the agreement and they are no longer under the settlement agreement, and that's why they went back and basically they modified and they are not under that ordinance anymore.
Do the chair. So out of our SSOs in 211 or 212, what were they and how many of them were lower sewer lateral?
Overall, the number of SSO last year was 14 and the year before 12. Out of those total number, I don't know exactly what the number of, if I remember right, two were on private lateral. I am modifying my answer. The city does not report necessarily all of the SSO if they are not the city's responsibility. On what the city reports, the SSOs on lateral or mains, which are the city's responsibilities. And only just 25%, about 25% of all of the sewer laterals in the city has cleanouts. That means this number include a number of lateral SSO which are city's responsibilities.
Okay, so this, obviously this is to help meet this requirement, I'll call it obligation, whatever the word you want to use.
Correct.
However, if we were serious about this, then obviously it's beyond that scope of just 1940 to 1960. And the point-of-sale, as we talked, you know, maybe we have 5% in a year, between 5 and 10% of houses sold in a year?
Based on our information, about half of those in average in the last five years, in average, about 315 transfers took place for homes built during this time period. That basically half of the homes are built in that time period and half of those built in that time period were transferred in the last five years.
Right, so if truly the city wanted to have some aggressive program to try to take care of these situations, like the city of San Mateo does, they offer a program, a shared sewer lateral program, 50% up to $5,000. And they offer it, and then residents obviously see that as an opportunity and then they go forward, not even in these criteria, as they take the proactive approach. In this, we're going to the point-of-sale, which in essence, if we're only going to hit the folks within this period, 1940, 1960, and at point-of-sale, really, it's going to take decades and decades to truly bring up to a standard of what we're trying to achieve or what supposedly everybody's, and making stuff aside, but what everybody's trying to achieve.
So if I may, councilmember, I think that's a, that's a good point. The fact, though, remains that this ordinance, if adopted, would nevertheless capture three to four or 500 homes per year. So the other aspect of it is that this is certainly a first step, and it's a first step that's required by the baykeeper agreement. So the baykeeper agreement doesn't require us to solve the problem for every, every single home in San Bruno. It only requires us to adopt a program or to consider adoption of a program for those particular homes that are at highest risk of having their sewer laterals fail, and that's why this was selected in the agreement as, in essence, a starting point for the city's action.
And why is that higher risk is that the orangeburg pipe is considered the most inappropriate or higher-risk type of pipe, which has up to 50-year life cycle, and already that life cycle already passed.
We got a problem with baykeepers, and so I, I mean, if it wasn't about baykeepers, then I'd have this issue about point-of-sale. Again, I mean, I heard what you said about South San Francisco. How did they satisfy that now that they don't, because obviously they haven't gotten rid of all their orangeburg. So, I mean, is, what if we don't do this ordinance? How, you know, how are we penalized and what other options might we have?
So there is a, an option in paragraph 61 of the agreement, which is on the first page of your staff report, and it says if you, if you don't adopt such an ordinance, then you have to come up with a program, an alternative program, that is going to be addressing at least the same number of homes as would have been addressed by the program. So in fact, that's one of the things we're now exploring with baykeeper in discussions with them at the moment. We don't have a final answer because, as you may recall, the city council approved a program to replace the sewer laterals, the private laterals up in the Crestmore in the fire-damaged neighborhood. So we're seeing whether baykeeper would be willing to agree to a delay in implementation of such an ordinance and give the city credit for all of those homes whose private laterals are being replaced in Crestmore. And what we've been told about those laterals is that they are primarily orangeburg pipe and they are primarily failing. So we're hoping that, of course, most of the residents in that area would take advantage of the program and that we would be able to convince baykeeper to count those homes as a, as a credit. Nevertheless, we think it's important to comply with the agreement, to bring forward a proposed ordinance, and if you don't give us any other direction tonight, we do intend to bring it back for you at the next meeting for introduction with whatever changes you may recommend.
I also wanted to ask about the, what's in the staff report about the voluntary program at Sharp Park and why that hasn't been successful? Because you were off, the city was offering to pay a portion of the video and the cost of replacing, and it says that only four property owners took advantage of it, so.
I would say that the main reason, other agencies who has the private lateral program in place, all of the agencies what I discussed this issue with, were very successful with this private lateral program. I think city staff did not do enough outreach and enough, didn't work aggressively enough, reaching out to that neighborhood, that this, this program was specifically crafted for a high infiltration area in the Sharp Park neighborhood and basically targeting only just that area. And I am personally convinced that this program would be more successful if staff will have a more aggressive public outreach and communication with that neighborhood to implement the program. Maybe on our part, this program has to be implemented between now and 2016 and will, due to the time availability and staff resource concern, wasn't the outreach done as aggressively as should have been.
My final comments is that I think the city attorney misspoke when he said he'd be taking care of about 300 homes a year. It's, the study only shows that five, in five years, there were 300 transfers.
No, the number in the staff report is an average for the five-year period. In fact, in 2012, there were 487 homes that would have been subject to the program.
Oh, okay, yeah. So I mean, if we come back with an ordinance, I like the idea of giving people not necessarily an incentive, but, you know, giving them a break. And if, if it finds out that, you know, the majority of our city is, has orangeburg pipe, they're going to, they're going to need to video it, and if we can, you know, give them a break on that cost, you know, and then that guarantees that, you know, that there is a problem there, you know, then I think they'll be more, more adept at, you know, paying the price for it. That's just my thought.
Anything else? Sounds like it's the council's desire to have staff bring an ordinance back, is that correct? Ken? Rico?
Yes, yes, I, I don't want to upset the baykeepers, I know.
I think we understand, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much.
Item 10E, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with precision concrete cutting for minor sidewalk repairs in the amount of $120,000 and authorizing a construction contingency of $30,000.
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the council. My name is
My name is Yoon Jun Kim. I work as the city engineer for the Public Services Department. The city is currently in the construction phase to complete the last phase of city's current six-year cycle of sidewalk repairs. This cycle of repairs has been focused on repairing sidewalk deficiencies that are, that are the responsibility of the city, with a small portion of repairs that are the responsibility of the private property owners, where the city has received voluntary participation. At the conclusion of the project underway, city will have repaired approximately one thousand four hundred and seventy-five sidewalk locations, which includes one hundred and forty locations that are the responsibility of private property owners. City's proposed new sidewalk program was presented at the CIP workshop in November, in October, and at the CIP budget approval in November. The proposed sidewalk repair program would focus on both private and city responsibility repairs through a five-year cycle. Repairs would be performed through two separate subprojects with two different repair methods. One sub-project would utilize a low-cost saw cutting technique to repair smaller offsets throughout the entire city, and the other sub-project would make more extensive repairs through full removal and replacement of sidewalk sections by neighborhood zone. Under the proposed contract before you with precision cut, concrete cutting, they would use their patented horizontal saw cutting process to make repairs to minor sidewalk deviations. In general, the horizontal saw cut method can be effectively utilized for sidewalk deviations up to one point five inches where the sidewalk structural section and base are still in stable condition. The cost is approximately forty dollars per repair. Majority of the sidewalk deviations that will be repaired are the responsibility of the private property owners. Since the cost of these repairs is so low for each individual, staff is recommending to perform the work at city's cost rather than go through the administration and expense of coordinating with each individual property owner for reimbursement. Precision concrete cutting will also perform an inventory of the entire sidewalk system, which identifies damage that they are able to repair and also identifies damage that will require a full removal and replacement of sidewalk sections, which would be repaired through a separate contract. This survey would be used to prepare the next sidewalk repair sub-project. The proposed contract amount of one hundred twenty thousand dollars would provide for the repair of approximately three thousand sidewalk offsets with the twenty-five percent contingency to account for the variability in quantity estimates and individual repair costs. Precision concrete cutting has satisfactorily completed numerous similar sidewalk repair projects for other public agencies in the Bay Area, including Daly City, South San Francisco, Emeryville, Mountain View, and San Bruno. This concludes my presentation, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff on this? Or action?
So, just to clarify, we haven't made any kind of repairs in this fashion?
We have.
With saw cutting and grinding?
In the past, when the contracts were let out, it gave the option to grind, and somehow the sidewalk contractor subcontracted with precision concrete cutting in previous projects.
Oh. Okay.
And then, through the chair, I just noticed the contingency, which is thirty thousand, which of the, you know, the hundred twenties is a good amount. Let's just put it that way.
Correct.
Reason?
The survey we have currently, we have about two thousand known sidewalk offsets, and this is based on our previous program, which was established in 2007, and it has been updated on an ongoing basis, based on citizen complaints. And so, we haven't done a full new inventory yet. So, there's variability in the inventory, and there's also variability in the actual, each individual repair cost. The repair is based, the repair cost is based upon the width and the offset height. So, each individual, most of the repairs have half of the sidewalk up and half of it actually flush. So, you have it, so the actual, if the, if the offset was one inch high at the max, it would be zero at the lowest, and so it'd be, it would average out to a half inch. But some of the offsets are full offsets where they would be actually more, a higher price. So. Oh, okay. So, there's variability in how we measure out and price, unit price, each individual repair, which is kind of outlined.
Okay. Any other questions? Action by the council?
I'll introduce the resolution. Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Barra?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye. Item ten F, adopt a resolution authorizing the purchase of a municipal street sweeper from GCS Environmental Equipment Services, Inc. in the amount of two hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty cents.
Honorable mayor, members of the city council, my name is Robert Wood, and I'm a management analyst for the Public Services Department. As you know, Public Services is responsible for the city's street sweeping program. Regular street sweeping improves the overall look and feel of the city's neighborhoods and business districts. And from a regulatory standpoint, street sweeping prevents trash and debris from getting into the stormwater system that eventually flows into San Francisco Bay. The long-term trend in the region and the regulations of the Water Board is to further reduce the trash and debris that makes it into the stormwater system. To reach these long-term goals, one of the Water Board's key recommendations is enhanced street sweeping. Currently, the city has two street sweepers. One is a 2001, and the other is a 2007 sweeper. 2001 model is now thirteen years old. It breaks down much more often and has reached the end of its intended use. But more importantly, the 2001 sweeper no longer fully complies with state diesel emission regulations. Right now, the city can no longer, can only operate this sweeper for a limited number of miles or hours per year. Typically, the city reaches this limit around October, November. The other sweeper does currently meet the state emission requirements. After reviewing all the alternatives that are described in the staff report in more detail, the city recommends purchasing a replacement street sweeper. This will allow the department to maintain current, the current service level, keep up the visual look and feel of the city, and also comply with regional long-term stormwater requirements. During 2013, the operation staff drove several sweepers and finally recommended a similar typical vehicle that we have now. The city was able to take advantage of the price guarantees recently offered to the city of Concord by GCS Environmental Equipment Services. The city has purchased other vehicles with them and is very satisfied with the company. It is our recommendation to approve the purchase of a replacement street sweeper in the amount of two hundred fifteen thousand, two hundred thirty-one dollars. The purchase will be paid fifty percent out of the capital vehicle equipment and fifty percent from the county's Measure M, the vehicle registration funds. At this point, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Any questions of Robert?
Through the chair, very quick, on the 2001, how is, are you recording as far as hours driven, miles? How do we quantify how, I know by age, but.
The state requirements, it's a thousand miles or two hundred hours. Just because we have a smaller city, we don't usually reach the mile threshold. It's usually the hours. It depends on how frequently we use it. Right now, it's around.
I apologize, I wasn't clear enough. So, let's say Ken's car had fifty thousand miles on it, so what?
Oh, how many miles?
Yeah, there you go.
Oh, sorry. Actually, I'm not sure.
Me too.
Yeah, it's, we, in general, we never reach, it's not a very high, only because we drive it only within the city. In general, we never reach, it's not the, the age doesn't get worn down because of, the engine gets done because of the.
The wear and tear on the vehicle?
Yes, that was the main thing.
Typically, it's a heavy equipment, retirement age is calculated based on age, but also the level of use, number of hours used on yearly basis.
And so, on the 2007, what would be the projection of that being brought forward for replacement?
Right now, we're suggesting between ten and twelve years. I'm assuming we have another quarter, six years left.
And I also want to just note that I appreciate also the option being looked at as far as other neighboring jurisdictions, looking at all options available and bringing that forward, and I appreciate that.
I understand the maintenance issues, and so is that, is that the most contributing factor in replacing it? Because I would assume that if it's running fine, yes, you know, you got the emissions problem, but why not keep using it until it dies?
Well, I mean.
You cannot use it. Based on the regulation, you cannot use it. Actually, Ted, our department parked the second sweeper at the end of last year until after reached that number of hours. Last year was the first year when this new regulation entered, had to be applied, and our second sweeper had to be parked. You cannot use over that number of hours. And if our first sweeper is, has to go for maintenance or broke down, then you don't have any alternative choice. Basically, our street will be left unswept.
Ken? No further comments, I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember Barra?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye. Item ten G, receive a report and provide direction to staff regarding the annual schedule for appointment of city council members as liaison to city advisory, citizens advisory committees, commissions, and boards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This item was brought to you at your single December meeting, as it is in every year, to coordinate with the meeting at which the vice mayor selection occurs. Specifically, the item before you tonight is reconsideration of the schedule for the city council to provide each city council member the responsibility to be a liaison with one or two of the city's nine citizen advisory bodies. It was brought to staff's attention after the most recent consideration of this rotational schedule, that the way that we have been doing it historically now for the last several years results in a situation where, because we've been doing it on a four-year rotational cycle, and because there are five city council members and nine liaison assignments, that each city council member only gets, in a four-year rotational cycle, to serve as a liaison with eight of the boards and commissions. That then, after four years, the protocol that we've been using resets, so that then the city council members begin again with the, with the schedule that just simply resets itself every four years. As I said, that prevents each or creates a situation where each city council member only visits with eight of the nine boards and commissions. Was suggested to us, it was actually, unfortunately, Councilmember Salazar is not here tonight. It was his initiative to identify that this may create a little bit of a problem for council members in their interests to be more broadly participating with boards and commissions and having the opportunity to move through all of them in a rotational cycle. And that by adjusting the schedule so that the, so it doesn't reset on a four-year program, but just moves, so that each council member moves through all of the boards and commissions and then resets on a five-year cycle, that, that would be a more effective option for the council's consideration. Brought this forward tonight despite the fact that Councilmember, Councilmember Barra is here, Councilmember Salazar is not here, because obviously, we're already into the end of January and wanted to be time-effective in terms of the council's participation with the boards and commissions in fulfilling your responsibilities to visit with them at least once a year and to be available to them, so that you have the option to consider whether the five-year cycle better meets the council's needs as opposed to the four-year cycle, and if so, we would make an immediate adjustment.
I understand that, but I don't understand why it was totally changed. I, first time, first time in years, I've visited one of the committees already. And now, with the proposed change, I'm not even the liaison until, for a few years. No, it'll be next year.
So, let me be clear.
So, was it because of what, so is it set up that, on the five-year program, that we're being allotted the committees that we haven't had in four years or something? Or was it just tweaked?
So, no change has been made. And we have historically used the four-year rotational cycle, which has the effect of you only serving with eight of the nine boards and commissions over the four-year period. Councilmember Salazar suggested, and staff is bringing forward an alternative proposal that would change the current schedule and create a new system whereby you're rotating on a five-year schedule and serving with all of the boards and commissions. Council retains the option to do that or not. Nothing has changed as of yet.
Okay, maybe I wasn't clear. Why couldn't we just start with 2014 with what we have, what we were scheduled on the old system, and then, and then shuffle into the five-year system? Because, for example, I'm, under the old system, I'm Citizens Crime Prevention and Community Preparedness. On the new system, I'm Cultural and Arts and Personnel Board. And I, then I go back to Citizens Crime Prevention and Community Preparedness next year. So, I'm just saying that I've started, and I've gone to one meeting, but I don't know if my colleagues have gone to any meetings yet. And so, now, it looks like we're all going to change, you know, one month later.
Through the chair, can, if 2014 and 15 were just switched, and then sixteen continued as it was normally proposed, would that take care of that, where there wouldn't be a change a month into it? Would that address that concern?
Yeah, I mean, unless, I mean, if it was just an arbitrary thing to start off at some point, but if there was a method to, that caused it to change from the proposed system to the, you know, because I believe we've all changed. I mean, we all started with one, with one, with one responsibility, and now with this proposal, we're all changing a month later, so. If we can keep it and then go into the five-year, I have no problem.
So, the suggestion is that we would keep the 2014 schedule as previously approved and change.
Accordingly.
In.
Into a five-year.
Go to a five-year schedule so that everything would roll as it is. 2018 would be the fifth year, and then, is that what, is that what you're proposing?
It sounded coming better from you. I just didn't know if you could just switch 214 and 215, and that would take care of? It would keep what everybody already had, because I was on planning commission, so that's why I'm assuming that. So, everybody who had already assigned 214, which says 215, you just reverse 214 and 215, you just swap them?
Yeah.
And that might take care of the same thing and then keep the routine, according to the proposal? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it's, if you look at 2014 of the existing system, and you look at 2015 of the proposed, that was. the proposed, that was... I'm not around 2018.
I'm sorry to say that I don't, I'm not sure that I'm following.
You gotta, you gotta look at them, you gotta look at them side by side.
Right.
That's the thing. Okay, so look at, look at, look at Ibera, citizens, crime prevention, in 2014, I've got citizens, crime, and community preparedness. Now you go to the proposed, 2014, I'm listed under culture and arts and personnel board. However, in 2015, I'm back on citizens, crime, and community preparedness. The list of 2015 under the proposed is exactly the same as the list of 2014 under the approved, under the existing.
May I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
On the proposed, take this column and stick it over here, and make it 2018, and that keeps everything the same, it just shifts it over one, it shifts it to the end. It shifts the change to the end of the cycle instead of the beginning of the cycle. So that if you look, if you rename 2015 to 2014 on the proposed, and then go... 2014 becomes 2019. Yes. That, that makes, it keeps this, this year the same as what was already approved, but it adds in the fifth year without changing anything until year five. Does that make sense?
Let's just draw straws.
So, so Ken could get his credit for already attending his meeting, and there wouldn't be any shifting back and forth?
Would it work best if staff, has heard counsel, goes back, adjusts it, sends it out email, and I think we'll be fine? Is that okay?
We'll do that.
Let Michael look at it, too.
We'll do that.
There you go, since he wasn't here.
We'll do that.
You work with my councilmember Salazar, and we'll all be ready to go.
I think he did that because he knew he wouldn't be here.
We'll go, we'll go wherever we're directed.
All right, we're going to get an email.
Great.
Let's go.
Item 10H, receive a report and provide direction to staff regarding decorative lighting on San Mateo and Genovin Avenue.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the city has, for the first time in at least a number of years, during the recent holiday season, achieved a opportunity that has been of strong interest to residents and some council members alike over the past number of years, and that is to provide a decorative lighting in the downtown area during the holiday season. Again, this is something that had been identified as a, an interest of numbers of residents of the community suggested by persons participating with the Chamber of Commerce and others over the last several years. In 2012, staff initiated a review of what it would take to install decorative lighting in particular, to provide the electrical connections that are necessary to power such lights. Unfortunately, proved to be not a simple item and required the installation of new electrical connection boxes at each of the locations where lights would be provided. We initially looked at whether lights could be provided on the trees that are currently growing in pots along the frontage of, along the sidewalks of San Mateo Avenue, and determined that a more viable option might be to, and more, to provide a more structurally sound installation, that lights could be installed and, by wrapping onto the streetlight poles that exist along this, this street frontage. We were unable, due to time considerations, to complete any productive improvements in the downtown during the 2012 holiday season, but were able to accomplish that for the 2013 holiday season. We have recently, and since the lights were powered up the day after Thanksgiving, received a very large number of very positive comments from members of the community, and have recently received requests that the lights remain on throughout the year as opposed to only during the holiday season. The purpose of tonight's item is to request direction from the city council regarding that initiative and whether this is something that the council would like to see continued or provided only during the holiday season.
Through the chair, obviously, it's up, and it was a surprise to me driving by, but I will tell you, speaking to a merchant just a couple days ago that owns a business there, the, due to them being white, it doesn't give the appearance of just Christmas, of the holiday, and so therefore, I know he was very much in favor of maintaining them and keeping them going, and I think if, as little as we do brings a little light to downtown San Mateo Avenue, I think for now, we go forward with it.
Robert?
Robert Rico, Seventh Avenue. I'm in favor, but I've heard from a number of residents that they hope that the city would continue that as a year-round, and I think, I can also speak my position on the Chamber of Commerce, I think it's, it helps the Chamber to just show that the city is more responsive, and it makes it look more professional and much nicer, so I would hope you would agree to find the funds to keep it up year-round.
Anyone else? Mary?
I think this is one of those easy ones where we all agree. Oh, thank you. I think this is one of those easy ones where we all agree. I, I thought it was delightful, and it looks great, especially since this is our centennial year, I think we should light the place up, so.
Sounds good.
I would, pardon me? You're going to go, you go right has, democracy, you can vote any way you wish, but I'd like to.
Good, stop us direction. Got it?
Yes, there we go.
Item 11, report of commissions, boards, and committees, there aren't any this evening, added 12 comments from council members, and receive a brief oral report from Councilmember O'Connell regarding attendance at the National Pipeline Safety Trust Conference, November 21st and 22nd, 2013, in New Orleans.
Thank you. It is, it is a conference that consists mostly of various panels covering a variety of topics concerning how the pipeline throughout the country, pipelines throughout the country are operated, and how the operators conduct their business. The most, I felt one of the most interesting observations was how the different pipeline operators presented their cases and how they conveyed what they were doing. Some of them were totally dismissive and arrogant about any regulations that might be imposed or that were suggested, they felt that they knew their business and no one else should tell them anything. And then, on the other hand, there were operators who were very concerned about public safety and looked for consensus with other operators on how, best practices and how to make their pipeline safer. And so the contrast from across the country, and including some of the Canadian people, was quite interesting. I urge us to continue, if any of the other council people are able to go next year. One of the things that was new this year was they had a panel of people who had suffered in some manner from pipeline ruptures or from gas leaks, and the pipeline operators were listening to these concerns, so it was a very moving and touching piece, and some of the operators came away with a new sensitivity to what their activities and their lack of safety concerns could actually do. So I, I think it was a quite worthwhile event.
Thank you. Robert?
Robert Rico, Seventh Avenue. Without going into a whole lot of detail, and maybe none, did you learn things that will allow San Bruno to better interact with PG&E and the California PUC to benefit our residents?
I think every piece of knowledge is helpful, and the more you know about how other operators, pipeline operators operate and conduct their business, the more, I don't want to say ammunition, but the more ammunition that you have on what our local people do. So, yes, it's a simple answer.
Thank you. Closed session, we just had a closed session before this meeting, and now we will talk about adjournment to the next city council meeting, right here, February 11th. Meeting adjourned.